We're going to call this workshop to order of Effingham County Board of Commissioners, April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and we'll have the implication and the
It's called orders.
Call to order everything at the next meeting. So we're going to go right into our workshop to save time tonight. I believe our clerk has something brief with HR she needs to discuss with us.
Yes, sir. We'll call Ms. Mouseoff up to discuss it. It's a leave amendment to the leave donation policy.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you for your time. We had an incident recently with an employee that kind of exposed our leave donation policy. So currently what is approved by the board that was passed in two thousand and twenty-one, employees have to have exhausted all of their PTO, but they have to be out on FMLA, right? So they have to have a medical reason why they're out. But we just had an employee who unfortunately lost a spouse. And as we know, by policy, bereavement leave is three days. So I know that some of her coworkers and her department had wanted to donate leave on her behalf to allow her some time to, you know, grieve and settle. And I kind of thought maybe I could ask you guys what you thought, if it might be interested in amending that policy where we could also include the death of a spouse if someone wanted to donate leave. So before we did all the work, I wanted to see your thoughts or some feedback and what maybe you think of this situation.
You're donating, we give three days for
Bereavement, yes, sir.
Are they donating, one of their three days or they donating their
They would donate from their own leave, yes, sir. So some employees, you can carry up to four hundred and eighty hours, and we do have some employees that max out and roll over because they just don't take time off or they're so busy.
My question is bereavement is separate
Yes, sir. It's separate.
From other type of leave?
Yes, sir.
So we're, you're asking also, can they use other types of leave?
Donated personal time from another coworker or employee, yes.
I got you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so then they would just take additional personal time out of that?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
Is it the max is three days and that's for spouses and children, I suppose?
Yes, sir. Yep, immediate family.
That's not a whole lot of time, really.
It's really not. And, and to kind of compound the situation, she, because of COVID, she wasn't able to see her son who's deployed over in Japan. She had gone for two weeks to see her son and the grandchildren.
Used up her leave.
And came home and found out that her husband had a massive heart attack. So, yeah, so just really bad situation, right? She didn't get to say goodbye. She wasn't there. Her coworkers would like to do something, but unfortunately my hands are kind of tied right now by policy. So I didn't know if you might be
If somebody wants to donate their time to help a fellow coworker, that should be a no-brainer personally.
It is, but I want, and I want to be sympathetic at the same time.
Within parameters, obviously.
Yes, sir.
But at the same time, I want to recognize that, you know, staff, employees, and everybody has like thirty days of leave and personal time in addition to the three-day bereavement.
That's correct.
And what I do not want to get into where suddenly a hundred days are donated, there need to be some limits on, on that, I believe, like additional
Like a maximum time?
Yeah.
Sure.
Additional five days of bereavement or something, or, or up to two weeks total, including the three days.
That's fine. I mean, as long as the county's not out of any, I mean, if it's, somebody's willing to give their time.
Yes.
But, yeah, I mean, I'm not against that either. I'm just saying if somebody's willing to donate their own time.
I wouldn't be opposed to
We're not, we're not, the taxpayers aren't out of any extra money.
True, but I think it's sometimes it's understood that everybody does not take the full special personal leave time. You know, that we give it for those situations, but everybody doesn't use it all. Is it usually compensated if, if people don't use it or they're usually getting compensated for a hundred percent of the leave time? To answer your question, if it's fully being used or paid for, then I'm with you.
Yeah. So most of the time employees will save it up, like if they're gonna, you know, retire or they're leaving, we do a payout once they leave. But they're, they're constantly accruing the whole time they're
You never lose leave time.
If, if you go over that four eighty, four eighties are max, the sheriff's office, they do not have a max. They keep accruing. But county, board of commissioner employees, four hundred and eighty is the limit.
Okay, so it really wouldn't cost them anything to give them whatever they have? I just knew it was different types?
Yes, sir.
There's bereavement and there's personal leave.
Yes, sir.
Make sure we understood that.
Yep.
I wouldn't be opposed to, to move in at the five days so they'd have that week because it's not something that would ever apply unless something like this happened.
Right.
They'd be sitting in a bank somewhere, but if something terrible like this happens and they've got a full week to at least deal with it and if they don't
It's usually a week by the time arrangements are made, you know, I mean
Yeah, it takes a little time to get affairs in order.
It's a huge deal.
I'd say a couple of weeks. I mean, you never know how people react with the loss of loved ones, you know, if they were able to come back and even function.
Some, some would rather come back, I'm sure, or just, you know.
Well, and it is a case by case. Like I said, this was originally approved in two thousand and twenty-one. This is our first instance. It, it's not going to happen all the time, but again, I've got some compassionate people and I thought it was worthy bringing to the board to just see.
I like the idea of going to, three's never going to be enough. Like you said, you don't even know when the funeral service is to about the second or third day. So I would, I would suggest we look at a plan that moves it to five days for everyone for bereavement and then allow the transfer of time.
Time to whatever they want to donate.
Okay.
Ten days, just.
For additional, maybe additional five days. That gives you two
Two weeks off.
Two weeks. And then
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a reasonable, that's better than what we have right now. So it's a good start.
And remembering that we give thirty or so personal days and, and we should be holding some of that back for sicknesses and illnesses and unexpected issues that arise in our lives. That's why you don't assign it just for vacation.
Right.
Or sick leave. Now that our employees have the ability to hold some back to make sure they have that. So if they held back four or five days for illness or bereavement and we give them five days and they get five days for another, they could have three weeks.
That'd be awesome.
And I think this board would always consider something else if we needed to. It could always come back for us for special consideration.
Sure. Okay. All right. Thank you. I appreciate your time. Thank you, Ms. Stephanie.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right. They'll come back with something maybe based on what we just talked about. With that, I'll turn it over to Tim and our staff to cover our work session topics.
Sure. Most of the items that you're going to see today are related to changes in the zoning code that we've been working on. You know, as we, as they go through attorney review, we want them to, to bring them up to you to find out if you have any hesitation on them before we try and approve them at the, at the board meeting. With one last one, there was a change in state law regarding body art and would require us to either amend or enact a local legislation related to that. And the folks from DPH are here to talk about that. But the first item up is, it, the first four items will be from, from Development Services and Steve.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, if it's okay, we can let DPH go first and they can leave, if that's okay?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
So that's going to be number five, discussion of official code of Georgia and rules of body art.
We can both fit.
I can turn sideways.
[laughing]
Good afternoon.
Need a bigger archway.
That's right. Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. My name's Stephen Andrews. I'm the Environmental Health County Manager for, for Effingham County. We want to talk about the body art rules and regulations that were passed by the state. It was Senate Bill two fourteen, which directs the Georgia Department of Public Health to adopt statewide body art regulations. There's actually two items I'd like to talk about. First also is the proposed fees because there's, there's currently no fees that we have for, for body art here in the county. The first is the, is for facilities, five hundred dollar proposed fee, and then the guest artists, a hundred dollars. That's, that's what is, is going on with other counties as well, the same type of fees. So there's, there's, it's, it's throughout the entire district.
These fees paid to the state or the county?
Um, they're paid, they're paid to us, to the county.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, they're already been adopted by the Board of Health too on February twenty-eighth. You want to talk about the body art stuff?
Sure.
We also, also printed out the, the rules and regulations with you guys. I don't know if you want to, if you want to look at them or study them or what have you. Also printed out the applications, inspection reports and so forth, so.
Sure.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Brant Phelps. I'm the District and Environmental Health Manager for the Coastal Health District. Effingham is one of our eight counties. So like Stephen was saying, the, the state, originally there were, there was not a state body art rule in each individual county. I think we're kind of left up to themselves to govern body art. But with the, with Senate Bill two fourteen, it directed our department to come up with a statewide body art rule that went into effect October sixth of this previous year. So what we're asking is for, the Board of Health has actually already reviewed everything. They've, they've seen the, the rules, the up, the updates, and they've approved them through the Board of Health. But what we're asking for the commissioners is to also approve them as a local ordinance and fees. That way we can enforce fees because OCGA code requires you guys to, any fee that we ask or assess, the local jurisdiction has to be on board with, so you guys have to approve that. But by adopting the rule locally, it allows us to use magistrate court in case of any type of, if we have to, something goes wrong and we need some sort of legal course or action, instead of trying to go through state court, which takes long periods of time, we can use local magistrate court to help expedite.
Did you say it was a Senate bill? What Senate bill was that?
Senate Bill two fourteen.
The Health, the Health Department did a couple of meetings back, review all the policies and procedures. I, I chair that committee as well, and they covered all this with us. We did adopt the fees at that time, but it has to come forward commission. Just kind of relay on what was already said to you just now.
Mm-hmm.
On that board, you got Dr. Hineson, Gussie Nice, Ken Lee, myself, Nancy Ford. So a, a pretty good squad of this community has already reviewed those procedures and agreed that this would be a, what we want to adopt for our county.
And right now, we have nothing
Per se.
Right now, there's a, something on the books that actually says you cannot have a body art facility in the county proper. We would like to have that replaced with the current body art rule to match our other seven counties in the district.
And this allows us to enforce this if we adopt it tonight as a commission and have a fee. It allows you to regulate it, from my, my understanding.
On a local level.
On a local level, yeah.
So right now, there is one body art facility in the county. It's located in Springfield. They've been open since last September. We haven't been able to charge them anything because there's no fees that have been formally adopted. But if anything were to happen and we were to want to take any kind of action against them, we'd have to go through state court and it would take
I'm with you.
Months to get anything done.
The existing ones in the, in the city. It's not in the county.
Correct. It was, it's in the city limits, though.
Well, we need to abolish old one and there's a local ordinance, I assume.
We don't have one, I know of. We didn't allow it right now.
We have, we have one that says that no body art is allowed in the unincorporated area of the county. So I would not, speaking for Lee, but you would have to rescind that or get rid of it to some degree before you do something else.
And, and body art encompasses not only just tattooing, but piercing and microblading as well, so.
Now, this is not on the agenda for tonight. I didn't see it, did I?
No.
It's not.
So you'll have this on the future agenda?
Yes. So this would allow that and then unincorporate it, right?
Correct, based on, it'd be on zoning, zoning rules and regulations.
Allow it and allow regulation. But you'll still be able to police within the incorporated area too, right?
Yes. That all still will come through the, the office. The way it works, would work is any facility would get permitted through our local office, just like any restaurant or hotel or swimming pool. And then the artist, we certify them through the state office like our septic contractors, and they can move around through the state like a, and work in any permitted facility.
And the facilities are permitted by us.
Yep.
What is the microblading that you said?
It's, um
I haven't heard that.
It's with your eyebrows.
Yeah, well, they go in and
Well, that was a good statement. I don't know anything about that.
Instead of using
It's like semi-permanent.
Cosmetic. It's more cosmetic. Instead of using the traditional electric gun, although some of them do have a smaller version of it, most of them use a hand tool. So it doesn't go as deep in the skin, but it's for doing permanent makeup is what they call it.
Semi-permanent makeup.
Semi-permanent.
Okay. I don't ever go to a spa.
That's a good thing you don't, we don't know about that.
Yeah.
All right. You have the further discussion? I guess just bring that back before the board put it on agenda and we'll get it.
Agreed into the bill and everything. I think generally if we could adopt a state bill and it works for our county is a good thing.
Yeah.
We're not reentering the world.
Yeah, sounds good.
And I assume the, the local health district board will, will, will have a resolution or something supporting this to come forward, right?
We already, we already approved it.
Yes.
Okay.
At the February twenty-eighth meeting.
Bringing up some questions tonight, and that's what they should be bringing is what we approved it for.
Yeah, just making sure we're in sync.
Yep. Y'all should be adopting, or this board should be adopting what the health board already adopted in the way of a resolution.
Yeah, some, some counties, the wording's very simple. It's body art basically, you know, what the, what, as approved by the Board of Health on this date, we're basically approving the exact same thing they approved.
I'm sure the staff will run that by our attorney, make sure we get that done correctly. Maybe get that on the next agenda. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Thank you, Steve. All right, we'll go back to the top of our workshop and then turn it back over to Steve.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So zoning ordinance, Appendix C, Article Six, Section Uh, so zoning ordinance, Appendix C, Article six, Section six point two talks about yards, more or less setbacks and things like that inside of yards. In your packet, I guess there was something about red is strike through. So really what we're doing here is bringing practice up to the code, which is what we're doing out there now, so that's what we're gonna talk about. Six point two one, I just put the word front yard setback in there, it wasn't in their existence before, so I put it in there. Six point two two, it says a wall or a fence six feet in height or under, and higher if it's a retaining wall, may be erected within the yard, limits of any yard, a minimum of one foot from the property line. Previous to that, it was just allowed in the setback. So you couldn't put a fence along your property line. So we've been doing that for twenty years, and so we just changed it to make sure we're able to do that, okay? Then on the next section there, we got patios must be at all set by requirements for your yards, where the patio must be a minimum of five feet, it wasn't clear, we thought we'd put that in there. And then the last one, so no more than two accessory structures are allowed on one lot in the R or PDR district. So that's R one, R two, R three, R four, R five, not AR one, not AR two, and any PDR district that comes forward. And then the, it said originally including a private garage, that garage counts as one structure. So you can do the garage if it's detached, and then another, you know, some type of accessory structure.
These are lots, basically less than an acre, could be.
Exactly.
Acre, could be a quarter, could be a half acre.
So currently, they can, they can pile some stuff on there.
I got you.
Yep, so we're saying that wasn't the intent. Now, out in AR ones and AR twos, you know, you could still have some capacity to do that. And so those are, so that's what that ordinance is about, yards, uh, uh, six point, Article six in the zoning ordinance. So next, I would like to bring up our building official, Ashley, he's gonna talk about some building code that we need to amend as well.
Good afternoon. Ashley Kessler, Building Official, and staff recommends approval of an ordinance revision to adopt Chapter one of the International Residential Code. It's a, the adopted chapter would cover policies that are already practiced here in Effingham for years now, including duties and powers of the building official, permit requirements, certificate of occupancy and ability of revocation, and construction documents, inspections, violations, stop work orders, sort of thing. So staff recommends alternative one.
So we've already been following this?
Y, y, yeah, and, and we're not actually voting on this, but he's just, um, that, that would be at the meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I know that. I, I've noticed all these are on a meeting, I'm just asking, we've been following this code, we just didn't have it in, in our code.
That's right.
Looks like all of this is, from what I could read, you know, we're just cleaning this up and bringing everything in line.
Pretty common stuff.
Yeah.
But I did, and I, and I was trying to make, make sense, because I know you mentioned stop work orders, but we do have that codified now in our ordinances.
We do, it just clarifies it more.
So is there anything gonna be limited, eliminated in our old code and this replacing it?
No, this has never been adopted before, so this is.
We were just using the state, uh, process, we just weren't, it wasn't in our code.
It was every other chapter but this one, yes.
The state, when the states adopted international building code, they removed Chapter one and allowed it to remain to be used as a guide for local governments, I believe.
Okay, I think I understand, thank you. Like Mr. Dillows says, clean up on aisle six, I believe. Number three?
So number three is, Kimberly, so I'd like to introduce Kimberly.
She's gonna talk about addressing.
Good afternoon, I'm Kimberly Barla at Planner One. And this is the addressing ordinance, so all new addressing ordinance. So the purpose of this ordinance is to establish a procedure for the assignment or reassignment of nine one one addresses and street names in the county. The current addressing orders, ordinance was established back in ninety two, and it's only about five paragraphs. So myself and the GIS department, they constructed a new address ordinance that reflects the procedures and policies that we use today. Establishing a physical addressing process will ensure that addresses will provide the best information for E nine one one from the GIS database, which can be used for emergency services as well as mail delivery, utilities and other delivery services. To ensure that they do have the correct information, we now require detailed plot plan that is reviewed by GIS and the Planning Department. The previous method started with zoning and ended with GIS, but now, in contrast, it's gonna start with GIS and end with GIS. They'll approve the street names and assign the addresses. No building permit shall be issued for any house, structure in the county until the owner has applied for a nine one one address. Assigned nine one, nine one one address numbers will be fixed to the buildings or structures, provided that's not located more than sixty feet from the edge of street. If it is located more than sixty feet from the edge of street, um, they would have to be on individual mailboxes, curbs, or signs located in front of the location. The general, sorry, the general principle, principles of assigning street names and street types with descriptions are defined in this ordinance. Some examples is avoiding duplication, like in a subdivision, Quail Lane and Quail Drive, avoiding street types in street names like Terrace Court or Trailway. This ordinance also has been sent out to emergency service leadership for review, and it will be coming at the next BLC, which will be five twenty one.
Okay, so it sounds like again, these, this is just the processes and procedures we were following, and they were codifying it.
Yes, and we have changed the procedures, yes.
They, they did fine tune it and make it a little bit more precise. There's been a lot of debate with regards to what's an appropriate name for, for a street, and so now this kinda codifies it into the actual ordinance, some of the requirements.
We're glad you shared that with emergency personnel, I don't know, they may have a different angle we hadn't thought about.
Yes, they are reviewing it as well.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Steve, sounds like you've cleaned up a lot of loose ends tied to a lot of loose knots together for us, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. So also would like to talk, and tha, that was, uh, our current addressing ordinance is about two sentences long. So we just, we just need a little more policy to go with the practice that we had talked about. And so, but everybody, I think even school boards looked at that, I think the post office has looked at it as well.
Yeah, you need a code and standard that drives a practice, not a practice that drives a code and standard.
Right, exactly. So the, the last one that we have here that's on the agenda, and we still have one more to talk about, is the site plan. So with the help of the county attorney, we came up with what we would call a site plan ordinance for non-residential land, okay? So the subdivision ordinance takes care of site plan and preliminary plat for subdivisions. But you notice when we would bring you industrial rezonings and or commercial rezonings, we did not have a site plan process unless you folks put it in as one of the conditions they submit a site plan. So we felt like that was a deficiency in case something happened where we didn't have one that did need to be rezoned, we didn't have a site plan. So that's what this does. This gives.
Site plan would have to have the berms on industrial.
Berms, buffers, lighting.
Happened with you a few times, hadn't it Roger, where the burn kinda changed?
Yeah, so.
Or where you had no nonexistent.
Yeah, or nonexistent, right. So parking, everything that's in our ordinance according to the site plan is now for non-residential, 'cause that was already included, is now gonna be specifically addressed, that's what they'll have to do. And then in OpenGov, we'll adjust the workflow, so that's included in the site plan as well. Now, Mr. County Attorney, I can't remember, how does the approval process go again? Is it, the Board of Commissioners approves, yeah, the Board of Commissioners, before we issue any billing permits, it has to come before you folks, okay? So we'll get it all right, we'll make sure they're following the criteria ordinance, and then it will come before you for approval. And it just, it, it needed to be done. So this is what that addresses. So remember, you have the residential side, you've already, you know, done through subdivision, this is non-residential, so it'll be your commercial and industrial stuff.
Yeah, I was looking, it's quite extensive what they'll be providing us in the site plan, which is good. And I assumed it was just being reviewed at an engineering level, staff level before?
If, if it, if it wasn't part of the conditions of a rezoning, yes, it was approved at the, or, you know, at least reviewed and approved at the staff level. But, you know, somebody pointed out, um, well, this is all well and good, but I don't have to. And we're like, oh, that's a good point. So if it wasn't included as a condition, you know, so now they, they want to.
Yeah, I'm surprised we didn't already have it, and glad we're getting it in here now so we can speak into these developments more than we have been able to in the past.
Yes, yeah, so, so I appreciate Mr. County Attorney doing that, working with us on that, but I think it's real important we get this done.
Yeah, we tend to forget about things, there's a lot going on, this, this, this'll make sure everything's in there that should be. It gives us a, a better starting point with.
It, it does. Well, it, there's more confidence in the zoning if you know the site plan's gonna come through.
Yeah.
I, I think that would help you in your decision-making process.
Is delineating the wetlands part of the site plan?
Yes.
Thought I saw that in there.
Yes, flood plan?
Yep, flood plans, all that's gonna be stuff we always ask them to do, but now it'll be coming before us before we rezon it.
Yep, that's right, exactly. So you'll, you're confident in the fact that if you rezon it per the request, you can still place some conditions on it, but you know that that next step in the process has to be that site plan approval, which you will see again.
Got you.
Delineation, it takes place before the site plan, or at what stage?
They, they need to be delineated before site plan approval, I think is what's on there, yes. So somebody's gotta plan ahead.
Yeah, I wouldn't think it needs to be before rezoning, but after, if you rezon at your own risk and you don't have as much dry land that, but if you're gonna put, put forth a site plan, we don't want it changing massively because of the delineation.
So that's part of the subdivision problem is, is that, you know, they come before you to rezon to a certain thing in the PD text, and then the delineated wetlands, they can't do that amount, or they could do more. And so they gotta come back for you again.
materially change locations.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, great.
So this will be added with the rezoning process?
Um, I don't know if it'll be simultaneously or not. Some might, depending on the simplicity of the, of the site plan. It takes the place of a sketch plan, right?
Okay.
We're, it's a.
Somebody delineated before they.
So we'll be taking a step actually out and do it all at one time now, pretty much?
No, I, I, I don't, I don't think so, I think they'll come to your rezoning if it's not that complicated of a piece of property, meaning there's no floods, there's no wetlands, they meet all the criteria of the ordinance, they're still gonna do it as a separate line item on the agenda as a site plan. But you could do the rezoning first and you could do the site plan.
Do the rezoning subject to the site plan then?
Or vice versa. You could do rezoning and then hear the site plan.
I mean, one of the stipulations for this zoning is being, that is approved site plan.
That is something you could do.
Well, but, but that would be the ordinance.
Yeah, that would be the ordinance, yeah.
And, and so, but one question I have is so, as a general rule, the board likes to see some sort of visual on a rezoning.
Right, where, where's the wetlands, where's the?
And e, even if it's pre-delineation, so, but we can require a
Concept plan.
Concept plan to accomplish that.
Absolutely.
During rezoning, and then a site plan, which then has to go to the board.
Correct.
Yeah, so the concept plan is, it could be, the site plan has to be, it will be. So once you pass that site plan, you know, 'cause I know you've, you've had some trouble with this, that's exactly what's gonna go on the ground. And then you're rest assured that we have to go out there before they get the certificate of occupancy, that that's exactly what has happened on the ground.
And then if something really changes, you could add stipulations to the site plan at that juncture, right?
They won't get a CO, they won't even, yeah.
I mean, if, if there's not an approved site.
That's right.
They'd have to come back and ask for a variance or.
They can't come back and ask for variance, and that's what, that's most of the time, when we go out there and look at it for compliance, that's usually what happens, yeah.
If you got a concept plan and site plan is totally different than everything on the concept.
That's what's good, if they'll use a site plan listing to prepare their concept plan, some of them won't be exact, like the delineation.
That's right.
But the burn, the setbacks, the, the detention areas, they could do a lot of that preliminarily.
They have a pretty good idea what they're gonna do.
What it looks like, and would know more what we're zoning.
And the, the basic thing for me would be, are we still protecting the residents in the same manner we wanted to when we rezoned the property?
And with that site plan having to come back and see you, yes.
Yeah, so you get a shot at that, and that would be all really the main thing I'd be concerned with.
Right.
On the concept versus site plan, are we still achieving the same general purposes when we first rezoned?
And of course, in relation to this, we're still gonna bring back some more subdivision changes to you to tighten that up, because there are still some, I think some loopholes that we need to close.
And if you had, got an, an aggressive developer and he already has a delineation, theoretically, he could come forth with a site plan and a rezon at the same time.
He could.
He's got his delineation, he's ready, anybody wanna move forward, that wouldn't prohibit them from doing that, so. He could really expedite things if he wanted to do, do so.
I do have a question, I'm trying to get, because y'all was talking about during review, my only concern is it's really under the building and building regulations, which is really at the time a building permit, is there?
So the county attorney?
Have it in the right, you know, so somebody's not ready for a building permit and go down the list and say, oh, gosh, we've gotta go to the board and get site plan, you know, just make sure we're clear on it.
Yeah, it would have to be.
I mean, to me, that was logical to put it there, you're gonna have situations where you're not gonna go to zoning. You're gonna have existing zoning, and, you know, just because it's there doesn't mean it can be ignored, because it's not tied with zoning. So to me, and, and I guess when you look at it's the non-residential aspect of it, there. Now, if, if we revise the residential site plans, that'll be where you traditionally find it.
Gotcha, gotcha.
And then just to let you know that on the agenda tonight is another revision to the animals ordinance that we're gonna discuss. Ms. Samantha's gonna bring that forward, and we'll kinda give you a little history involved in, in what happened, and how that came into being, and, and what changes we made last year and what, what changes we're offering this year.
Is there gonna be any discussion in the workshop?
We could have some. We could have some, absolutely.
The, is Mr. Edwin here?
Yes, sir.
This, uh, so to start this off, this conversation, I had no idea there was such an uproar about the chicken ordinance. And I bumped into a friend and he says, what's going on with the chicken ordinance? I said, I had no idea. Mr. Edwin called me and he said he started a petition and had five hundred signatures, and I had not had the first call that people were upset. There was an understanding that people were being told that it was twenty dollars per chicken fee. And I think that's what kinda started.
Yeah, we're at six hundred ninety signatures right now.
So anyway, the reason I said I wanted to discuss it tonight, when he turned me on to the Effingham Peeps Facebook page, there's three thousand members of that page. Again, I had no idea, and they are upset about the chickens.
And so the chicken ordinance impacts our zonings?
Uh, the, yes, it does. So I'll, can we, we'll hear from a brief explanation from Ms. Samantha, she's ready, okay?
Smith, why don't you catch us up on this chicken ordinance that we approved?
Samantha Easton, Planner Two, so the chicken ordinance that was adopted back in November, so what we did was we actually allowed four hens in R one zonings that previously were not permitted to. so what we did was we actually allowed four hens in R1 zonings that previously were not permitted to, um, keep. So not A.R. 1, not A.R. 2, just R1. Um, there was some confusion with like.
So there were no, no hens or laying chi-chickens for our zoning till we approved it?
Correct.
Okay.
So it was completely prohibited before we adopted the ordinance back in, I believe, November. So what we did was we created a backyard hen permit. Um, there was a $20 fee that was in the original ordinance that has been removed, uh, just because, um, it wasn't voted on during the, um, schedule of fees approval in July. But that permit was just so that way code enforcement can do their, their, uh, review of the property, of the permit and everything like that. Um, the permit is really just to let code enforcement know that you have four hens. You are adhering to the ordinance, you're a hun, the coop is 150 foot from your neighbor's house. It was to let code enforcement know so that when your neighbor called, code enforcement already knew you had them and they already knew you were in compliance. Um, I think the ordinance was a little confusing in that aspect, so what we're bringing forth tonight is to kinda clarify that a little bit more. And we're also going to be removing, um, there is a maximum number per acre for A.R. 1 and A.R. 2. So we are removing that and we're also changing the minimum.
Removing that or?
Removing it from the one that we adopted in October.
Okay.
Or November.
November.
So, um, and then the minimum lot size, we have reduced down to half an acre for A.R. 1, A.R. 2 and R1. And we've also actually co, uh, defined commercial livestock and fowl, as well as may put some small regulations in there as well.
Yeah, I wanna make sure the point's understood, there was no attempt by the board to stop anybody from having chickens. The, the only reason we're doing this, I believe, is because people were, were getting chickens and then they got roosters that caused complaints that we had to address. Also, people were putting their coops, if this is your property, they were putting it next to their neighbor instead of, so that's the reason we have the ordinance where it's gotta be 150 foot, I think. And, uh, so we had to address these complaints and I think that's how this ordinance was born.
Yes, sir, and the ordinance actually reduced the 200 foot that was required previously to 150.
Yeah.
So it did make, you know, a little bit more room as well.
Having seen code enforcement out to find out, you know, what, what was going on.
And then also, the changes or amendments that were made in November were from an existing ordinance that was already in place. So you, there was one in place, people may have not known about it, but there was one in place. Um, otherwise, that's why we could have made the amendments. But yes, we've had several, several code complaints about chickens and roosters in R1s. So we had one individual that had 100 hens on about an acre and a half of property. Um, and so, we know that's the exception, not the rule. Um, but so, um, which is why ordinances is just on the books anyway. So what we're gonna bring to you tonight is, is just a little more relaxation than what was on the books already.
I'm looking at what's coming up tonight, my agenda, we are moving any limit on A.R. 1 or A.R. 2.
Yes.
Many chickens as you want?
That's the suggestion, yes. Most of the time, A.R. 1s are five acres or more.
Right. But I don't think you want a chicken farm on a A.R. 1.
So that's why we define what a commercial operation is?
Yeah, I did see that, okay.
Yep, so it's not like, it's not like somebody's gonna have 500 chickens on A.R. 1 because eventually they're gonna fall under the commercial category.
I got you, I remember seeing that distinction now. And then the, uh, for R1, it's a half acre, you're saying?
It's a half acre for all zonings.
For all R's?
A.R. 1, A.R. 2 and R1, sorry.
It's a minimum.
A minimum, yes, sir.
Right, minimum.
But for R, you can have up to four.
Right.
Yes, sir, four hens specifically, that's chicken hens.
Dropping the fee that was approved in November, but you can still enforce permitting without a fee, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, and, and the purpose of the permitting was not for the folks that wanted the chickens. It was because we had so many phone calls about fowl that when code enfor, if they could just check real quick, if they have a permit, then it's done. We don't have to go out there, we don't, we could just tell them on the phone.
Mr. and Mrs. Jones has four hens, they have been permitted.
They're compliant with code.
That their hens are 150 feet from, from your, your residence.
Yep, that's right. And so that would have been the easier way than take more time to do it. But that's, that's fine. We can still.
Sounds like it'd be better. Then there was a gentleman that came up to the mic, did he wanna?
Yeah.
Did this answer your questions or concerns, did you have some other ones?
Uh, no, sir, um, sorry, I suck at public speaking, um.
Okay, you state your name just so the clerk can have it.
Uh, my name's Edwin Torrella, proud resident of Effingham County. Um,
Thank you, no problem.
I do appreciate all the hard work that's been done and, you know, getting that restriction gone. Uh, my next thing is the roosters. If I run a rooster with my hens, uh, it's for protection, so I'm not running outside every time I see a hawk. Sorry, sir.
You'd like to consider?
I have a extreme, uh, fear of speaking in front of the public.
But you'd like to consider roosters?
Yes, sir.
My only issue is that is I have a house that's next to another house that has a rooster that crows every morning, afternoon, night.
So I have a proposed, a proposed way of, uh, of dealing with that. My rooster stays inside of enclosed coop until daylight hours, when I could be playing music as loud as I want to, cause there's no noise ordinance.
There's a noise ordinance.
Yeah, well, it's not, it's, it's a rooster shouldn't be breaking a noise ordinance. Um, in the middle of the day, some crowing shouldn't affect, you know, those days, most of us are at work. Um, especially 150 feet away from the house, you're not hearing that much, or it's not coming through your windows. Um, maybe proposing an ordinance that if you have a rooster, we keep it in, you know, some sort of enclosure that barriers that sound. My neighbors can't tell, uh, when my rooster's crowing because he's in an enclosed gap, in closed coop until daylight hours. You can't hear him in the morning. If I went outside his coop, I could probably hear him in there, but 150 feet away from their house, they can't hear him.
You know, what if you have somebody working night shift and sleeping during the day?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna be hard pressed to agree with roosters, but I'll let Steve.
What if we, the, it, there's a lot of what ifs that can go with that, you know, what if you have a noisy neighbor? What if the guy without the muffler is driving down the street, you know, there's a.
We've got ordinances for all that, there, there is violations.
I know a lot of people that work night shift that sleep during the day, it's, it's not a what if, it's a where if.
Well, I just figured I'd bring it in.
I appreciate it, yeah.
Thank you, sir, thank you for hearing us.
Steve, do you wanna address that, uh, issue about roosters?
Jim, may I come to the board, please?
Sure, go ahead.
Hello, sir. Chairman, directors, my name is David McPherson, I'm a happy resident of, uh, Effingham County. I think what he was trying to understand is it's, uh, we have ordinance set in place already for this type of stuff. Dogs are too loud at night, if the dog barks at midnight, we have an ordinance setting that. We have noise complaints, we already have ordinance set in fact for roosters, chickens and everything else. These things are more like pets to people, I have one myself and trust me, if somebody complained too much about the night and called it a complaint, I would get rid of it. Same way you would a dog, same way you would get rid of noise, these ordinance exist for that, including up to people who are complaining about noises. I, I'm just questioning why there's more ordinance on ordinance specific to the chickens. And I know we've been affectionately called the Chicken Peeps of Effingham, cause it's a fanatic, but these are like pets to us, these are like dogs, these are like cats, these are like any other animals that we might have in Effingham. If one gets loose, there's a fine, and just like if a dog gets loose, if it's not enclosed properly, there's a fine, just like if there's a dog or a cat or anything else. So the question becomes, well, I do understand that there are certain things that need to be limited, 100 chickens on an R1 is about ridiculous as I could sound. Uh, but there's also the same, could be said if somebody's running a puppy farm on an R1 or a cat farm or anything else, we have these ordinances in places for this. And so, a kind of redundancy of ordinances seem a bit silly to me on that, and I do understand some changes and amendments could happen to Effingham, the animal ordinances, and I would agree to talk with that for workshops, why I came. Roosters can be held in contempt as famous any loud animal, we have ordinances for loud animals. And I do appreciate the fact that you did discern that there's a difference between a commercial fowl and just pets that most people have had. This is due to 2020 happened, most people got stuck in their homes, chickens became a fascination for us, fascination to our children. A good plan to learn about the FFA, FFA, farming, animals, reproduction, eggs, as everything else, so it's a real big passion for people to have that. But we wanna respect other people's properties and silence as well, too, we want that both to be said. So I think we should just need to look at is that if somebody should have roosters, roosters and hens are about the same, you're absolutely right. If I kept a rooster inside my house, you'd never hear it crow. If I kept a loud dog inside my house at night, you'd never hear it crow. So, but to completely remove that possibility of happening, I feel like it's excessive.
That's a good point, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I've, you know, in.
Steve?
I've said the same thing about dogs, or barking dogs, if it's going on day in, day out, it's, it can be annoying, but I don't think we have any type of ordinance to control that.
Um, so Samantha will explain that this, this is, um, we address pigs, horses, fowl, guineas, turkeys, ducks. All of that is in, uh, chapter 10 of the animal ordinance, and she went, asked Samantha about that.
Well, the gentleman had a good, good thought, why do we single out a rooster over a dog or?
Um, so.
Another animal that can be loud.
Um, true, okay, so I will lean on my own experiences of having chickens and roosters. Um, the rooster, um, quite frankly, is there, not necessarily for reproduction, but it offers an awful good protection for the hens. Um, hawks, foxes, everything, a rooster will go to bat for their hens over anything else you could possibly do when you're not home. Um, roosters also have a tendency to start earlier in the day than a lot of other than their, their neighbors do. Um, 4:00, 5:00 AM, they start crowing and, and, you know, but that's what they're there for, they're there to start the day for everybody. Um, so that's probably why roosters are picked on, because they just have a tendency, um, to single themselves out um, in the morning, um, before other folks are awake.
Right now, this ordinance, your proposal to approve tonight would eliminate roosters from an R zoning?
From R1, I think it says that now, doesn't it?
So the ordinance that was approved in November eliminates the roosters.
Yeah.
Um, and if you don't mind, uh, Mr. Floyd, there is a part of the ordinance that specifically refers to nuisance animals, um, being barks, whines or howls in excessive, continuous or untimely fashion. So that is, and that's not just dogs, that is all animals that are considered nuisance animals.
Yeah, they're considered nuisance.
To this gentleman's question, why should we single out the roosters then from the other animals? If, if, if they're repetitively going off like a dog just barks?
If it comes a nuisance, we get enough.
You call code.
Then we have to address it, instead of just eliminating them, maybe consider something that, I mean, this gentleman keeps his.
We could teach them to, teach them to tell time, and then that way they would only crow at certain times of the day.
But so.
But his point is, we don't eliminate dogs, that, that, and I've heard dogs that howl at the moon all night long.
I agree, and I didn't know that. There's a chance a dog will bark, there's a 100% chance a rooster will crow. Yeah. And that's the only concern.
But, but we do, we do respond to, to code complaints about dogs barking late at night, late at night, especially when the deer are out running around, they'll start barking.
Jokes aside, I mean, volume wise, complaint wise, what do you get? I mean, roosters versus dogs versus other things?
Um, chickens, roosters and then pigs.
What's the last one?
Pigs.
I mean, for noise?
Uh, pigs, um.
Smell?
No, I mean, for, for noise wise, what, what?
Uh, noise is, is, is mainly roosters, um, and guineas.
So currently, if a dog is, becomes a nuisance and people start calling, we can take action.
Absolutely.
So possibly we could do the same thing with roosters if it's a nuisance rooster. Say again?
Remove all the dogs in the neighborhood.
Oh, yeah.
Like you do.
They'd burn his place down.
But, but the R1 districts, the reason why we did that in November, R1s, you know, they can be 3,300 square feet, I mean, they, they're, they're smaller lot, so, um, the, uh, the ability to cause a nuisance is greater on a smaller lot, on an A1 or A.R. 1, A.R. 2, not so much.
I don't think it's issuing A.R. 1, that's five acres.
Right. Yeah, it'd take a lot.
And, and I think it's important to bring up that prior to us passing this ordinance last year, no, um, chickens or roosters were allowed in our districts.
Yep.
Right?
That's right.
Um, so every, whether it was a hen or a rooster, it was, you were in violation of the current code. Uh, if you, if you, and that had been enacted, you know, decades ago. Uh, and so this essentially loosened up that, um, to, uh, permit, you know, wi- wi- with these restrictions, uh, on it. So we're gonna allow it only in R1, uh, with these conditions on it. Uh, and so just, you know, uh, so it wasn't a case of us, uh, you know, creating an ordinance that, um, that actually restricted folks because it actually loosened, uh, the, uh, the, the legislation.
Can, can you have roosters on A.R. 1?
Yes.
Yes. And A.R. 2.
So it's a smaller lot.
Just a smaller, I mean, if you got a half acre lot, you got roosters, it's hard to.
Prior to this ordinance, it didn't actually tighten up anything, it loosened it up. You could not have hens or roosters on R1. Now you can have hens on R1, but not roosters.
And, and with all animals, I mean, the parents need to be the responsible ones.
Food for thought, and we'll discuss it again tonight when we have our, our.
With all animals, the parents need to be the responsible one, right? Yep. Yep.
All righty, is anything else for the workshop tonight?
No, that's good, thank you, thanks for listening.
Thank you for getting all this cleaned up, Tim, uh, Steve, Tim, anything else?
Nope, that's it, that's all I got.
All right, we're gonna take a, uh, a break and come back at 5 o'clock for our meeting. All right, we're going to take a, uh, a break and come back at five o'clock for our meeting. All right, is everybody ready? We're going to call to order the Effingham County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting this April sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four at five ten PM. Sorry for the delay tonight, I'm moving a little bit slower after some shoulder surgeries, so if you bear with me. Roll call, Mr. Floyd.
Here.
Mr. Burdette.
Here.
Mr. Corbett's here, Mr. Deloach.
Here.
Mr. Kiefer.
Here.
All those in attendance, we do have a quorum. If everyone please, uh, stand for the invocation given by Commissioner Deloach and remain standing as he leads us in the pledge of allegiance to our flag.
Dear Lord, thank you for allowing us to gather here this evening. Please be with us and help us to do your will. Uh, thank you for many blessings that we have, Lord. Help us to remember that all good things come through you. Dear Lord, please be with all of our world leaders at this time, as we have a lot going on, on the international stage. Uh, please be, um, with our state and local officials as well, and in your name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any corrections or additions, deletions to this agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um, under new business number seven, um, it's the consideration to approve a water and wastewater master plan. This is a duplicate item, you actually approved it at the last meeting on April second, so it simply needs to be removed. We also need to postpone item number eight. Consideration to approve a proposal from Hussey Gay Bell and, from Hussey Gay and Bell for the design of the Midland Road sewer station, sewer extension.
Is it postponement or removal?
Well, for now, we'll post, we'll postpone it and then, um, after further discussion, we'll get rid of it.
That's May twenty-first.
May twenty-first.
Yes, sir.
These are the only two, uh, corrections?
Yes, sir.
Oh, if, can we, um, I forgot to mention the tabling of the solid waste master plan.
Okay.
Uh, if we can, uh, do you want to bring that up to table it at the time on the agenda till the next meeting?
Um, we can do it now.
Okay.
What item was that?
So that is, that's under unfinished business.
Yep, got it.
Your only item under unfinished business.
We're going to table that to five twenty-one as well.
Yes, sir.
Is that all the corrections in, to the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a, do we have a motion to approve the agenda with the three corrections? That's tabling, um, from one item under unfinished business to five twenty-one. And then removing item number seven and tabling item number eight, or postponing item number eight to five twenty-one, uh, under new business, and we have a motion by Mr. Deloach. Who was the second?
Burdette.
Mm-hmm. Burdette, that was.
Mr. Burdette?
Yes, sir.
All in favor of the agenda with the stated changes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no knows, we have our agenda. Next item is our minutes, do we have any minutes to approve tonight? I'll see listed on my agenda.
There are, sir, you will be considering to approve the minutes from the April second, twenty twenty-four regular meeting.
Okay, April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four.
April second.
April second.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Floyd, to approve the minutes as presented, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no knows, the minutes pass unanimously. Welcome everyone to the meeting tonight, comments shall pertain to the agenda items only. Should you wish to make remarks, clearly state your name fully in the, uh, microphone when you come to the front and speak clearly for us. Uh, all the correspondence for this meeting tonight is found in the agenda package, it's posted on the website. Any additional documents presented at the meeting shall be submitted to our clerk. So if you have something you'd like us to see, please give it to our clerk and she'll dispense it to us. And then, uh, that will help us move the meeting along. If you speak to an item tonight, two to three minutes is really helpful, allows everyone to speak that would like to speak to an item. Item number nine on our agenda is our consent agenda. This section shall include all routine items for which there will be no discussion. Should a need arise for debate, the item can be removed to the appropriate area of the agenda. Item number one in the consent agenda, consideration to approve a professional service agreement with S- uh, Snyder Geospatial LLC for a Q public net add-on for the tax assessor's office. Item number two, consideration to approve to renew a software service agreement between Effingham County Tax Assessor Office and Trueroll. Item number three, consideration to approve to renew a lease agreement for the radio communication tower with the State Properties Commission, that's the Georgia Forestry Commission. Item number four, consideration to ratify and affirm approval of a custom traffic signpost agreement between Effingham County Board of Commissioners and Honey Ridge Estate Homeowners Association. Item number five is an appointment, consideration to approve, to appoint Roxanne Riggsby to the Region Nine EMS Council. Item number six is a grant application, consideration to approve, to submit a grant application for Jima Local Emergency Management Performance Grants. Item number seven is an agreement, consideration to approve an easement agreement between Effingham County Board of Commissioners and Georgia Power Company for parcel ID zero three three one zero zero two two A double zero located on O River Road in Meldrum. Item, item number eight is a resolution and agreement, consideration to approve resolution number twenty-four dash oh eighteen related to operations and maintenance and a lease agreement between Effingham County Board of Commissioners and the Department of Natural Resources for Texakine Boat Ramp. That is our consent agenda, do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kiefer, second by Mr. Deloach, to approve the consent agenda as read, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no knows, the consent agenda passes unanimously. We've tabled the unfinished business, so we'll move to new business. Item number one on the new business is a public hearing. Uh, it's the first public hearing for a permanent abandonment of a portion of Otis Secundure Road.
Uh, Mr. Chair, Steve Candler, Director of Development Services. Um, if you'll see up on the screen, the portion of Otis Secundure that has been requested to be abandoned for the maintenance of the road. Um, it is all within the individual's, uh, ownership of property. Um, they do propose, uh, to put a cul-de-sac, um, at the. They do propose to put a cul-de-sac at the end of what's left of it. That's still the maintenance side. I think it's an eighty-foot cul-de-sac for the traffic that exists on Otis. The applicant is here if you want to ask questions. Otherwise, this is the first of two public hearings, am I correct? Mr. County Attorney, correct? Yes.
Okay, we're open to public hearing and see if anyone would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this road closing. Just come to the microphone and state your name.
Yes, good afternoon. Chad Zitrow with Kern and Company, here representing MS Two Farms who owns this property. Just a couple of points of clarification. This roadway, the county does not have an easement as far as a deed to easement or right-of-way there. It's its own private property and basically the only thing we're asking to relinquish are the maintenance rights of it. You know, and we do own the property on each side of it, in the area where it comes through there. We have proposed to install a cul-de-sac at some point. There has been a series of, you know, incidents, if you read the sheriff's reports, from, you know, damage and things that have occurred to the property, as well as it's a sharp curb that kind of goes to there on an unapproved roadway. So that's the rationale behind our request, we're glad to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Anyone else speaking tonight?
My name is Fred McRae. I live at three forty-one Otis Secundure Road. I moved out there in eighty-nine. That road was supposed to be not a county road. It was just an easement. I went to the county about it because of the school buses and all, the school bus actually bogged down out there. The county took the road over. It's County Road one forty-one. Mr. L. M. Neese owned the property. He owned all the property out there. And he is the one that allowed them to put County Road one forty-one out there. If they close that section of road off, it's going bottleneck Hodgville Road, which this road is taking at least fifty cars a day from four thirty-five o'clock till about six o'clock. December the sixth, one of those persons in a hurry passed me on the right side. And almost destroyed my vehicle, trying to beat the traffic off of Hodgville back out on Blue Jake. If you close that part of the road off. The ambulance is gonna have to come in through Hodgville. We've got people out there that may need ambulance. In fact, we just lost one of our neighbors a short period of time ago. The road is necessary for us to be able to get in and out. And as for the county's upkeep of the road, it's been sparse. The property on both sides of the road have been divided by this road for untold years. I moved out there in eighty-nine and it was established when I got there. And the county put a county road sign up one forty-one, which indicates the county maintains the road. As for not enough traffic to warrant maintaining the road, there's more traffic out there now than used to be on Hodgville or Blue Jake. We've got a lot of traffic coming through there. We need the road for expediting ambulance entrance, fire entrance, and other things that are necessary to live in a community. And I'm asking that you hold that road as a county road, number one forty-one, as it was established to be.
Where do you live on that road, sir? Can you look up there on the map? Are you in the red area or the blue areas?
Blue, blue area.
At three forty-one. Would probably be.
She said right about here.
Yeah, the clearing right there, yeah.
So, from Hodgville to your property, the road's gonna still be a county road?
Yes, sure.
It's gonna maintain.
But I won't have access from the other end of the road for ambulance or to get out, when Hodgville Road is backed up to the point you can't get out down there. We're, we, we have. I don't know what destruction of property for this gentleman is, but there's an old house down there that the wiring and all won't allow him to do anything with. I mean, it's.
Okay.
Inhabitable. And there's nothing else down there.
Is it, is it just one property owner on that red portion of the road that's wanting to be closed?
On the red portion of the road, correct, it's the same property owner on both sides.
And I heard the engineer speaking earlier that we, we only have a maintenance easement now, we don't actually have a, it's not a county.
Correct, so it, so it'd be prescriptive and limited to, I think twenty feet is state law, if I'm correct on that.
Even though it has a county road number, it's not really a county road, it's just a prescriptive easement to maintain.
That's correct, it's, 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 uh, we have an easement to maintain it, that's right. Can't widen it, cannot, cannot improve it, we can just maintain it.
Can't do anything to make it safer. You know, I'm, I'm not disputing what you're saying, I'm just thinking that if the other side could be improved, because it's a county road, the other side?
Yes.
If it could be improved, I would think the ambulances would want to come through the other side and not be bogged down or have the ruts and the bad road if they came.
Can you, can you repeat that, I'm sorry?
I would think that ambulance and fire, we have a fire station on Hodgville Road, they would come in from the Hodgville side.
Yes, and, and just so you know, we, we've submitted, this is just, you know, we, the, this affects the residents, so. You know, the process that we've come up with on this is that, you know, we're gonna send the letters out, we're gonna present it to you all, we're not even gonna have a vote tonight. We then submit to the, both EMS and fire and the sheriff's office.
So we've still gotta hear from them?
Yes.
I got you.
We still have to get feedback from them.
All right, all right, thank you. Thank you for your feedback, we probably need to hear from some others.
Are we going to maintain this end of the road?
Yes.
Yes.
The blue part? Absolutely, yeah.
The blue part.
Do we have prescriptive easement on that portion, or do we have right-of-way on the blue portion? Just curious.
Based on my research of the documents, there is right-of-way up to where the cul-de-sac location is. The property that goes through MS Two Farms property, which is Mr. Neese's, two daughters, our daughter and niece.
There's several properties there, looks like we might want to make sure.
But yes, the public right-of-way is up to the cul-de-sac.
All right, thank you, sir. This is just the first hearing, we're gonna have another hearing. Anyone else tonight want to speak before I close the hearing, just a few minutes?
Millie McRae. Mine is strictly from a medical standpoint. The traffic is horrendous on Hodgville Road. I suffer from AFib. If you know what that is, it's rapid heartbeat, that if you don't get the shots, you can have a stroke or a heart attack. And we go that way to the hospital. Well, if we've got to go down and hope it's not primetime afternoon, then we've got to turn right in all the traffic, get out on Blue Jake and go right again. And that little bit of time could be the difference in a heart attack or a stroke for me. And that's the reason I want it left open. And I don't know if that easement that he wants to put in for the cul-de-sac, if a school bus could turn around in that. Because we do have a school bus that goes down that road.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else speaking tonight?
My name is Bonnie Ward and I live at one fifteen sixty-five Blue Jake Road. And where they said that all the parties that were adjacent to this road had been talked to and were in agreements. The end of my property is, this is my property here. So this road, there's fifty-four feet that belong to this property here. It actually comes into a pie, so my, piece of my property actually touch part of the road that's gonna be closed. I have three kids that are still in high school. Their bus comes down that way, which they have the option to either be picked up on Otis Secundure or on Blue Jake, because of the traffic so bad in the morning on Blue Jake. So there's two stops that they can actually be picked up here and here at our driveway. We haven't, this is the first time that we've heard anything about this, about the road closing. With the way that the traffic is now, they're correct. Hodgville gets bottled up. There's been multiple times that ambulances had to come from that neighborhood, from the back, the front end of Otis Secundure to come out. Yes, has there been incidents on this road? Yes, I was actually part of one of them, I actually poured a corporal out of a car that was trying to remove a man because it caught on fire. So, but that can happen on any road. But for them to not be able to have access and the school buses to be able to come down and get out of the busy traffic of Blue Jake. Because Blue Jake's just getting worse as it is, because we're adding more driveways, we're adding more houses to Blue Jake, so it's just gonna pile up even more.
Okay, thank you.
Can you restate your name, please?
Bonnie Ward.
Bonnie Ward?
Ward, F U A R D.
Anyone else like to add anything else to the comments tonight? One more quick comment, we need to move on, come back to the microphone.
Everyone that this impacts according to the letter that I got, got a letter. Well, I talked to my neighbors that live on Hodgville Road, they've not gotten a letter. And this will impact them greatly.
Okay, we'll get, we'll get staff and our legal side to follow up on that, make sure. So we'll have another public hearing in our next meeting? Is that correct?
Steve?
Steve, we have one more public hearing in our next meeting?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yes. It'll be May twenty-first.
Okay, we'll take all these comments into our understanding and we'll have another hearing next time and we'll try to get some more facts.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna close the public hearing and we'll move to item number two. Under new business, consideration to approve the first reading of an ordinance to amend Part Two Official Code, Appendix C, zoning ordinance, Article Number Six, six point two yards in Effingham County Code of Ordinances.
So thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we talked about in the workshop, this is a change of six point two in the zoning ordinance, Article Six. To more or less comply with what's in practice in the field and to make sure the ordinance matches our practice. There's a couple items here. One of them is, the, the main one actually, is it says that fences can't be beyond the setbacks, the building setbacks of the yard. And right now, we allow fences, you know, within one, two feet of the property line. And in the front yard, they can't be over four feet, but they can be six to seven feet, you know, in the rear and side yards.
So I didn't realize that, fences could not be any closer than the setback?
Yeah, why would we even put one in?
Yeah.
That's what it says, so, I know, that's, well, there's, that's okay.
It's allowed to get pretty much on the property line.
It'll be on the property line, which is where most folks want to make sure that their entire yard is enclosed instead of just a.
Sure.
Steve, does this address the height of them as well, or?
It, it does not, we address the heights in the other part of the ordinance.
Did we move to eight feet or we stayed at six?
We allow up to seven. Eight is allowed, but they just have to get it permitted.
It's permit, not a variance?
That's correct.
So I know we got an issue right now.
Yep, yep, and, and all they would need to do is just get a permit and we'll look at how they're gonna do it. In the front, still only four feet though.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And then the other part of the ordinance is talking about accessory structures. And so in N E R district, not A R, but N E R district, and in the P D R district, a detached garage would be included in the overall count of having accessory structures. And in those R districts, we only allow two accessory structures.
Thank you, Steve.
So we would just recommend alternative one, please, for Article Six.
This is for first reading, is this not a public hearing tonight? Not required to have a public hearing, okay. Any questions or comments from the board though, before we make a motion for the first reading?
I'll make a motion to approve alternative number one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kiefer, second by Mr. Deloach for alternative one, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no knows, it passes unanimously. Item number three, under new business, consideration to approve the first reading of an ordinance to amend Part Two Official Code, Chapter Ten of Animals in the Effingham Code of Ordinances.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Samantha Easton, Planer Two. Miss Stephanie, would it be okay if I use the?
Absolutely.
Click here. All right, recently code enforcement has been receiving more code violations regarding livestock and fowl in residential zoning districts. Last year, the board approved amendment to the animal ordinance, creating the chicken ordinance, which allows four hens and R four, I'm sorry, R one zoning. After obtaining a backyard hen permit. This permit allows code enforcement to know that there is chickens and this owner of the chickens is in compliance with the ordinance. So if the neighbors were to make a complaint, code enforcement would already be aware and already know that this, the owner is in compliance with the ordinance. So they would also be able to keep their chickens. There was some, some wording regarding the permit, so we have removed the wording limiting, you know, the A R one and A R two chickens. We have removed the max, the minimum, I'm sorry, the maximum number per acreage, we did remove that. We also removed the twenty-dollar chicken permit fee. We've also made some small changes to the rest of the ordinance as well. As you can see on the screen, animal control officer has been updated to reflect the correct terminology, which is the humane enforcement officer. Commercial livestock and fowl has been defined as the primary business of the person or organization. We've also added the definition for humane enforcement officer to be defined as the position that's hired by the Effingham County Sheriff's Office. We've put a definition for swine. All mentions of the animal control officer has been updated to reflect the humane enforcement officer. And in dog park rules, we have made an amendment that livestock and fowl are prohibited from the dog parks.
Can't walk your pig or your chicken in the dog park.
Correct. So as far as the chicken ordinance amendments, you'll see here that we have reduced the lot size to half an acre for A R one, A R two, and R one. We have removed the A R one and A R two maximum number of chickens. We have removed the twenty-dollar permit fee. And we have also added some small regulations for commercial fowl as well. Under Section Ten dash one, one-three, keeping of horses. We have had some issues in the past where code enforcement's been involved with people having horses on property that's less than half an acre, in the middle of a subdivision. This is to protect those animals and give code enforcement a small, you know, you know, if you're living in the middle of subdivision, is your horse really having the best quality of life and ha, and less than half an acre? So commercial and residential livestock and fowl are both permitted in A R one zonings. Residential livestock and swine under a hundred pounds are permitted in A R one, I'm sorry, I was supposed to say A R two. All livestock is prohibited in the R zoning, so R one, R two, R three, R four, and R five and R six. And the minimum lives, the minimum acreage is one acre. And some changes have been made to the minimum distance of any occupied buildings. Staff is recommending alternative number one.
All right. Is there any questions, discussion? We had some lively discussion at our workshop related to roosters.
It's hilarious to me that we have to actually have an ordinance that restricts people from bringing chickens to the dog park.
If, if, if I can.
But we had an incident.
Yeah, exactly.
Where somebody brought a chicken to the dog park and of course.
You are correct.
The dogs chased the chicken, it was chaos.
Mr. Chair, I would suggest that Ms. Easton go over those distances, just so we're clear on how we used to do it and how we're suggesting to do it now.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the R one chicken ordinance, or the chicken ordinance reduces it from two hundred foot to one hundred and fifty foot if you have in the R one. If you're in A R two, you still have to have two hundred foot if you're, have two or more. That is to allow some R one areas to be able to have the chickens. As far as the-
Pause a minute. An acre is two ten by two ten. Chicken coop has to be a hundred and fifty foot from the property line to the next residence?
The dwelling, uh, the neighbor's dwelling.
It'd be hard to get on a half acre lot, any chickens at all.
So this is just the coop, has to be a hundred and fifty foot from the neighbor's house? Not the chickens, just the coop?
Okay. So chickens can go where they wanna go?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
They're free range chickens.
Thank you.
Is there anything else?
Um, we did make one small adjustment with the swine, uh, distances. Swine less than a hun- a hundred pounds and less than four have to be three hundred from your neighbor's dwelling. And swine more than a hundred pounds, more, one or more is now has to be, I'm sorry, they both have to be nine hundred foot from your neighbor's dwelling.
In A R one.
It's only in A R one and A R two.
It's allowed, yeah.
Only thing that would concern me is not having a number of chickens maximum on an A R property.
Yes, sir, we did remove that.
That's, that's my concern, I mean, not having, I mean, cause you could, just cause that's not your primary business doesn't mean you might have a secondary business with a thousand chickens on an A R one.
I think that kicked you into the commercial though, right?
Does it? Is that defined within this?
Yeah, it's defined, so that would kick you into the commercial.
So what's the commercial number? Is that in a different ordinance?
That, it's in here.
Currently, commercial is only defined as, um, raising livestock or fowl as the primary business or organization.
Oh, primary.
Well, I'm saying, there's no number.
So we can update that, that definition to reflect whatever you want.
Yeah, you could have a thousand chickens and there's nothing to say you can't have a thousand chickens.
Yeah.
Cause that's a, that's a business, it's not a hobby or a, I'm, I'm getting eggs for my family at that point.
Is that a permit, sir?
I think it should be a limitation.
Well, I say, is that not already on a permit? I'm just questioning, I, I agree with you a hundred percent, there should be a minimum-
Something in there that did, not saying you can't do it, but it, that would be a commercial application in that, in that case.
But the permit would then approve how many applications they had from there, right?
Say that again?
Kind of, kind of microphone.
Sir. Apologies, my name's David McPherson, so, Chairman Ward.
Get well spoken, by the way, very good, thank you.
Well, thank you so much, sir. I'm just, um, clarification purposes, with the permit would then approve how many, number of chickens they have. Now, I agree, a minimum should be held for a commercial side, I think that number should not debate.
Or, yeah.
Minimum for the commercial would then dictate what the personal would be,
True, you could do that one.
Because then you would have one for if somebody has a number close to that, then they should have a permit violation because they didn't get their permit for having too many chickens.
So the permit only refers to R one zonings, there's no permits for A R one or A R two properties?
No, 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 for commercial, there is a permit to get a commercial business. So if you get, so if I go get a business, I don't need a permit as long as I have the property to have chickens?
That'd be a business license.
That's a business.
Well, and for that is there's permits.
That's through the Department of Ag as well as our county ordinance.
I'm just looking for something to spur that.
Exactly, so I would agree with that from the commercial side, from that is permitting what that maximum limit is. Minimum limits are hard to definition, depending on what, do you have a half an acre? Do you have almost an acre? Do you have, I feel like there's a lot of there, but a simpler explanation would be, under the permit for when you go into commercial, what that minimum number to have before you need a commercial license, so if it's a hundred words-
To reach that number, that is commercial.
Exactly.
Correct, that would be another way to handle it.
I think that would be a best way to remove confusion, my opinion only.
Yeah, I mean, to me, it's the same, but it might be more clear.
It's the same, but it's clear, and also it's, when you tell people they can't do something, there tends to be a little bit more of a upbringing, so I think it would solve two solutions. So.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Thank you so much for listening, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I'm still not sure, you know, a lot that's a hundred foot wide, a hundred and fifty foot deep, it's about the size of normal R one lot, when you say. I don't think you can get chickens on that lot and not be within a hundred and fifty foot of the next dwelling.
I can actually pull up a G I S map real quick, if that's okay with y'all, in show.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, cause I'm thinking your fifty foot, if you put in the middle of your property, you're fifty foot from the other person's property. If they put their house in the middle of the property, you're a hundred foot from the dwelling.
Yeah, if you got two houses on each side of you, that may be difficult.
I don't think you're gonna be having chickens in a, on a, uh, third of an acre, it might be-
Especially if you got an oblong piece of property.
Take at least a half to three quarters of an acre to be able to get-
To, to meet those definitions.
Yeah. So it's a half acre now, you can't have chickens less than, you gotta have at least half acre, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And you could have four hens. Under, under this one?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
You might have four hens on the half acre, correct?
I thought they removed that.
It'd be tight, but you probably could do it.
Four hens for the R one.
Can't believe we spent so much time talking about chickens.
There's a lot of folks out there that, that like their chickens.
Yeah.
Are we getting rid of that, four hens?
Well, I think it is important to note that this ordinance that we approved in November did not tighten it. It actually relaxed and allowed folks to have chickens on a half acre lot.
On an R, R one?
Yes, sir, on a R one lot.
On a R one lot that you couldn't before. The only question I've got now is, are you wanna make an allowance for the rooster? There was some discussion at the workshop about that.
Well, there's a nuisance animal part of the ordinance here in Number Six, barks, whines, or howls in excessive, continuous, untimely fashion. We could put cackle or crow-
Yeah, you could add that.
And add to it and allow roosters. And if it turns into a nuisance, then we have to deal with it at that time. It's an option, but.
Now, do you-
Steve, what you think?
What they're talking about.
He's here to help them do it.
I have hawks at my house.
Staff is recommending, uh, Alternative One right now. Is that still the recommendation, or you, would you like to see roosters included?
So, the allowance for roosters, um, for folks that actually do, um, raise chickens to roosters do serve a purpose. Um, at the same time, they can be a nuisance depending on how close you are to your neighbors. If you wanna go ahead and declare them as a nuisance where it's something that we can respond to, um, then we could, you know, limit the number of roosters in our district if that's what you'd like to do.
So then that poses a question, would you limit it to four all total? One rooster, three hens, or four hens?
I would go four hens and one rooster if I did that.
I'd be curious how many people are concerned about the roosters.
They're not concerned about the numbers of chickens, roosters, most people only have one.
That's right, they're only gonna have one.
I mean, in roosters in general, I mean, are y'all in support?
I'm gonna have one.
You support roosters?
Yes.
If this is a-
I'm just curious, I don't know.
Roosters, you're gonna name one for each pen.
Well-
So that, that's enough for protection of the, the hens, just one?
So who's here tonight for, just to hear the discussion on hens and roosters? Okay, and all of you are for having a rooster on your property?
Yeah, I mean, we all have roosters and, to be honest, I moved from a subdivision out to twenty-two acres, so, not that I could do what I want and have a thousand chickens, but I did that because I'm from L.A. and I wanted to live in the country.
With twenty-two acres, you're not gonna be impacted by this.
I know, and it doesn't apply to me now, I just, that was the situation I was in.
Okay.
You know?
All right, very good. Do, does the board wanna offer any, um, you, a motion for Alternative One, which is staff's recommendation?
Now, I will say, I have six, six hens, but I don't have a rooster, probably ne- need a rooster, but I don't, I don't have a rooster.
Gotcha, but do you wanna make a motion for Alternative One, or do you wanna make a motion to, uh, amend, amend it for including a rooster? Or do you wanna table it? I don't wanna-
I think we should-
To your point, I don't wanna discuss the hen.
Right.
The other week, we don't have to.
To get, to get the minimum number or maximum, whichever way we go with that, we're gonna need to do a little bit of work in that area to make sure we don't have a commercial application.
Willing.
We don't have anything to prohibit that right now, I know it's digging in the weeds a little bit.
You can't have a commercial application in R, this is for R.
Yeah, this is just for R, but it also covers, uh, A R, doesn't it? It's just, just strictly, yes, A R and A R two, A R one, A R two as well.
Well, just like we've had in previous discussions, I mean, just whatever we approved tonight, doesn't mean we can't come back and amend it. I mean, so if, if y'all feel moved to add the rooster in there and for some reason it was being some big issue, then we'll, we'll talk about it again, I mean.
So how about a, a, um, a motion for Alternative One to in, to allow for inclusion of one rooster?
Yes, let's amend it to include one roo- rooster and an R one.
I like the gentleman setter, go ahead.
No, I just wanna make sure code enforcement is prepared to respond to rooster complaints.
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
We are, I, I, I don't think there'll be that many, but, yeah.
But as the gentleman-
I could care less whether people have roosters or chickens, I just want people to be happy.
As the gentleman said before, um, do we need to put the minimum amount in there so it has a number for the commercial? Cause right now, we don't have a number for that, correct?
Right, that's why I'm, it's just open.
So we need to add that as well?
It's just totally open-ended right now, so, but I don't know what that number is, I don't know anything about chickens other than KFC. Sorry, it's bad, bad joke.
And I, and this ordinance, is there a limit to the number of hens you can have in an R one?
In an R one, four.
Four.
Four in R one.
R one's covered.
So we have a minimum, if it goes over four, it's gonna be commercial.
No, 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 no. We're talking about A R one, we're talking about A R one and A R two. A R one and A R two have no limitations at all, but at some point, it becomes a commercial operation in A R one and A R two. And our only qualification for it being the commercial operation under definitions, uh, is that it's the primary source of income-
Yep.
Uh, for the property. And so if a person, um, you know, uh, could, you know, could-
Yeah, I don't like that.
Generate revenue somewhere else and have-
Well, the thing is, if, if- If you're doing chicken in the chicken business, not I'm an expert with it, but a good friend of mine, um, I think he's got about six chicken houses down in, uh, Cairo, Georgia, but when you're on that scale, it is huge. I mean, you're not gonna make a living off fifty chickens. So I say, we just stick a number on there, just say, A R one, A R two, hundred chickens. I, I don't think we've run into that problem, but again-
Per acre.
Yeah.
Or do, per acre, but then, let's put a number on there and if we start having issues with code enforcement, we'll, we'll come back and talk about it.
You could do chi- ten chickens and a per acre. If they got five acres A R, they can have fifty chickens, and I, I don't know many people that want fifty chickens, but maybe there are.
No, R one's limited to-
R one, R, R one.
You know, I mean, okay, so the four.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, you need to come to the mic if you make a comment. We'll take one more-
I don't know if we were open or not, I figured y'all were still doing it, the board.
All right, so I'm David Teal, I'm with Effingham, or I'm in Effingham County. You say four chickens per residential. Now, if you're doing a chicken thing, a lot of times, if you're ga- getting them for eggs, you got four chickens, well, they gonna stop laying, or they're gonna be at the end of their cycle, can we get four more chicks to start that cycle again? So when we take them four out of the, the equation, we got the other four replacing. See what I'm saying?
That overlap, there's gonna be some overlap.
Right, there'll be an overlap, uh, of a month or, or whatever.
What happens to the four that are going out?
That's right, you got four coming in, four going out, do what now?
What happens to the four going out?
Well, we gotta move along, I think, I think that can be answered from, uh, code enforcement. They can come out and they can look at that and say, all right, I got you, you got little ones that are growing, that could be worked out internally.
Code enforcement has some leeway there.
They can work it out.
Code enforcement's not gonna show up unless somebody calls and reports you, we don't just go out and randomly inspect.
Okay.
So I think you're, I think you're-
We would never know you had four chicks.
I think your concern would be addressed at code enforcement, in other words, they would work with you for that month that you're transitioning.
Okay, now, the twenty dollar-
We're removing that.
Getting it.
You're taking the twenty dollar out?
If we approve it tonight, it's gone.
Okay, okay, all right, that's fine. And the hundred and fifty feet, a lot of these people, my home was built, and then they put a subdivision in the back of the, back of where I'm at. So, my chicken house is a hundred and fifty feet away from the neighbor, but not, I don't know how far it is from the other one. So what about that part? If, if, I mean, cause if they're, say they're a hundred and ten feet away, what-
So he's asking, is there a grandfather in this? If you were there before the other house?
Yes, sir.
We've not received any complaints from this gentleman.
Well, no-
From which gentleman?
No, and, and I'll, I'll say, I, I think there is because he's got an existing permit, right? That's the one benefit of having a permit, uh, for the R one property is that, um, is that you got the permit before the house went in.
That's right.
Right, so you have an active permit, and so therefore, if a house comes in and that house is less than a hundred and fifty feet, since you have a permit, um, I mean, am I correct on that? Yeah, since you have a permit, um, you know, you're, you're, you're permitted to continue to operate.
So what permit? I mean, this is R one, where I'm at.
I know, but you're still required to have a permit, you're just not paying twenty dollars.
I'm sorry?
You're still required to have a permit to have chickens in R one, uh, you're just not paying the twenty dollars.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, so you just need to get a permit.
Yes.
But the permits are going in now, the houses are already putting in, see what I'm saying? They, they've already got the established subdivision. I've been there for, the house has been there for twenty years. The chicken coop's been there for twenty years, I've been there for four.
Okay, I got you on that.
Gotcha.
And we'll, we'll have to figure that out, how do we, um, how, how do we implement a, um, pre-existing condition?
Steve, why don't you come to the microphone, let this gentleman have a seat, you can explain how you work that out.
So he is, he would be a non-conforming use based on the criteria of the ordinance. So anybody that had chickens in a certain distance up until this point in time would be a non-conforming use, and we normally base that, unless we have photographic evidence, we'll base it on the application that the person submits in Open Gov. And they sign an affidavit saying that that's the truth, that they're submitting that information.
All right, sounds good, so, so we can work this out internally.
Yes.
We don't need to spend any more time on the chicken.
Right, and we, and, and, and Commissioner Floyd's right, if it's not a phone call, w- we, we're not there. And the overlap is, is not an issue for us either.
All right, we need to close this out, I'm gonna entertain a motion.
Was there one more first?
But this isn't a public hearing, we've heard, we, we got a lot of business tonight.
I have just one other thing, and it's-
Real quick, come to the microphone, a quick comment, final comment, we gotta move on.
It's actually about the limit on the poultry in general for the commercial. It's not about chickens specifically, it's about quail. Because if someone has one, two hundred quail, that's not anything. But if that puts them into a commercial thing for poultry, it's not a main, um, form of income. It's almost like a, more of a hobby thing with that many quail.
What's the situation that you're talking about where it'd be an issue?
The, so if you have the limit for the commercial license for the poultry.
Of ten per acre?
Right.
Okay.
I mean, you can have a hundred quail in a thirty-six by thirty-six pen. So that is, the ten per acre is still extremely low if you're talking about a smaller bird. A chicken? That's one thing, but a quail?
So you're raising quail to sell to?
Maybe a hunting preserve for them to shoot, or you're doing, hatching out the eggs and eating them. It's still not a whole lot. I do not personally do quail, but my mom and my brother do. And it's not a big thing, but we have more than probably three, four hundred quail.
On how many acres?
We have, I live on a hundred and sixty-eight, and the flight pens are on land close to me, that's actually my mom's.
So yours won't have any problem with this, but it could be a problem for someone else.
Right.
So why don't we do this, we need to move on, why don't we address the quail, that's a good point, I, I like that. But, uh, Commissioner Deluches, we can, we can come up with the, the issues and resolve them as we come up with them.
Okay.
So we don't become taxing on anybody.
Okay.
But let's get this one done for the hens and get the permits done, appreciate your input, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. So I'm gonna entertain a motion to approve Alternative One with the, uh, addition of a rooster and the four hens on the R one and R two.
Just R one?
Just R one.
Just R one.
Right.
R two's duplexes, so.
I'm sorry, R one, yep, I'm thinking of A R two, R one, okay, is there anything else that we said tonight that we need to add to that?
Ten per acre.
And then ten per acre for the commercial side of the A R.
Well, ten per acre for A R one and A R two.
Correct, that's what I just said.
One applied.
For A, A R one and A R two.
I am, but I, I'm telling you, with the A R, I don't know that it's worth a li- it is agriculture, it's a, it's a agriculture.
That's why we have it, that's just my opinion.
So do you wanna eliminate it?
That's my, that, that's how I would prefer, but I don't know what the other board has.
And A R two be very small.
It could be a two acre.
It could be a two acre.
So non-conforming, okay.
I'm gonna call for a motion for this, hang on.
Okay.
We got, we can't handle this any longer tonight. We can carry it back to staff and they can tweak it for A R minimums, maximums, or whatever. We can carry it back to staff and they can tweak it for AR minimums, maximums, or whatever. Let's just address the, what's been presented to us with the removal of the fee. And adding four hens and a rooster under R1. And then any other thing that discussed tonight, Steve, if you and staff get together, bring it back to us.
We will.
Let constituents talk to you about it. We can perfect it as we go.
Okay.
Okay?
So moved.
Alright, motion by.
Hold it, hold it.
No fee and we can have, we can have one.
No, we're proving, it's easy to say this, we're approving alternative one, but we're adding a rooster to the R1, uh, permitted use.
Okay, that's all we're doing.
That's all we're doing.
Okay.
And removing the fee, correct? But that's in the.
That's all, that's a part of the motion. That's part of alternative.
And we will have a, a second reading, right?
Yes.
And then we'll, we'll have it in writing to actually look at for the second reading.
Yeah, but the no fee, all that's already in the.
Okay, I got you.
So that motion is by Mr. Floyd, who's the second.
Burdette.
Mr. Burdette, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no, we have moved down the road of perfecting our chicken ordinance.
So now this, there'll be a second reading with this wording in there that'll be reread in May 21st.
May 21st.
So in between there, if y'all want to talk to staff about anything else we need to discuss.
Handle some of these other things that you brought up tonight about minimums and.
And they're, they're gonna email me.
Okay, alright. Item number four, new business. Consideration to approve the first reading of an ordinance to amend Part 2 Official Codes, Chapter 14, Building and Building Regulations, Article 2 Construction Codes of the Effingham County Code of Ordinances.
Ashley Kessler, building official. Uh, staff recommends approval of an ordinance revision to adopt Chapter 1 of the International Residential Code. Uh, the adopted chapter would cover policies that have been in practice in Effingham County such as duties and powers of building official, uh, permit requirements, certificate of occupancy and ability of revocation, construction documents, violations, stop work orders. Um, staff recommends approval of alternative one.
I know that we had a good discussion at the workshop and this is basically cleanup. Talking with Commissioner Kiefer who has, you know, more knowledge than some of us in this area as a builder. Think he'd like the opportunity to put them side by side what we're currently doing.
Well, I would. It's not that, the state of Georgia when they adopted the codes did, did, um, exclude Chapter 1. And I won't, I don't know why exactly, but there, there may be some things that may not be applicable. It, it's probably just a few things. You know, one I mentioned, the, um, I know y'all said you wanted to be, to, to cover the policies like with stop work orders, but that's currently in our building. Let me find that one. And I'm sorry, I'm stuck on chickens here.
If you'd like a couple weeks to look at it, I don't, it's not gonna stop us from what we're doing.
Yeah, I, I, I would, and, and I think, um, if we tabled it.
Give us a motion to table, give you a chance to review it, cause we're gonna continue to move forward, issue certificates of occupancies and.
Yeah, nothing's changing the way we're operating. We may as well make sure we get it right.
So you want a motion to table to May 21?
Second.
Uh, motion by, uh, Mr. Kiefer, second by Mr. Deloche, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Then it is tabled to May 21st.
It's 6 o'clock for that, um, planning board item. For District 3.
Is it, is it, this is under planning board item?
We have one. We have to jump down to that one, that planning board item.
Let's go ahead and switch over to that. If y'all need to break, we'll press on, see if we can knock these things out. We're gonna move to our planning board item. We only have one item tonight. If you're here for some of the business, we'll be right back to it in about five or 10 minutes. So we have one item for, uh, planning board tonight, public hearing, consideration to approve an application by Sue Anderson as agent for SB Homes LLC to rezone 6.982 acres located on Old Augusta, excuse me, Old Lewisville Road from AR1 to R1 to allow for an addition of a residential lot. This is map number 272, parcel number 27 in the 3rd district. We open the public hearing.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um, this is, you've already heard part of this ordinance, I mean, uh, resoning. Um, you heard previously the 27A of this resoning to R1 on Old Lewisville Road. This is just the other 6.982 acres. Um, staff has recommended alternative number one.
Okay. Anyone tonight speaking in favor or opposition to this resoning request? So you know, going forward, I'll close the public hearing and see if there's any discussion from the board or a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with staff and planning board recommendations.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Deloche, second by Mr. Burdette to approve with staff and planning board recommendations, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any appo- opposition, say no. Hearing no, no, it passes unanimously. So we can therefore do the second reading of an application by Sue Anderson, agent for SB Homes LLC to rezone 6.982 acres located on Old Lewisville Road from AR1 to R1 to allow for an addition to residential lots. Map number 272, parcel number 27 in the 3rd district.
Make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Deloche, second by Mr. Kiefer to approve the second reading, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no, it passes unanimously. And with that, we'll move back to our new business. Item number five. Consideration to approve the first reading of an ordinance to amend Part 2 Official Codes, Chapter 14, Building and Building Regulations, Article 2, Construction Codes, Division 2, Section 14, dash 56, permits to Effingham County Code of Ordinances.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, as we discussed in the, um, workshop, this is an ordinance that addresses site plan approval and the process for that and the requirements of that um, for non-residential site plans. So currently residential site plans are handled in the subdivision ordinance. And this is gonna be for site plans in a B1, B2, B3, PD manufacturing, PD commercial, light industrial, heavy industrial zonings. So we're gonna require that a site plan be licensed engineer surveyor qualified professional. They're gonna submit it to development services to make sure that they follow the process and that all the requirements that are listed in this ordinance are on there. And then you will approve it before any land disturbing or, or building, uh, permits can move forward. And then the ordinance requirements are, are listed in here, um, from 1 through 17, um, and 18, such as 100 year flood zone, delineated wetlands, uh, topography, total acreage, things like that are all gonna be required on that. And more or less, that's what's being required now. Um, it's just that we didn't have a standalone ordinance that required it in case we did not include it in a resoning.
Okay, we had a good discussion at the workshop. Any additional discussion or a motion?
Just had one question, this probably fulfilling you guys. Would, would we wanna see density on a site plan?
See what?
For.
The density on the site plan.
For commercial, non-residential?
Or for resident?
That resident, that's, this is just.
Nothing to do with residential.
Right, exactly.
Just industrial.
But we do require that on the preliminary plan, yeah. Unresidential, yes, sir.
I'm good.
Yeah, this is just commercial and industrial. So you have a discussion or a motion to approve alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one. Second.
Motion by Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Kiefer to approve alternative one, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no, it passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number six, under new business, consideration to approve to renew a quote with OpenGov for a three-year period for procurement software.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Allison Broden, uh, procurement and capital projects manager. Um, so we did receive a renewal quote from OpenGov for the procurement software, um, which covers the next three fiscal years and the breakdown is on your staff report. Um, staff highly recommends alternative one.
Highly recommends. Do I have a motion for highly recommended alternative one?
So moved.
Motion, Mr. Floyd, second by Mr. Burdette, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no, it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, uh, 7 and 9, see, 7's been removed, go number 8.
8's postponed.
8's postponed.
Yep, 8's postponed, so I'm sorry. Number 9. Consideration to approve a proposal from Hussey, Gaye and Bell for design of Blue Jay Road Sewer Extension.
Yes, sir. So staff did request this proposal, um, and this is for a sewer force main extension along Blue Jay Road going from Hodgsville to Highway 17. Um, the original proposals included in your packets listed Greystone Subdivision is the beginning, but that has been updated to reflect Hodgsville. Uh, staff recommends alternative one.
Any questions, discussion? Motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one. Second.
Motion by Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Floyd for alternative one, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no, it passes unanimously. Item number 10, consideration to approve a proposal from Hussey, Gaye and Bell for design of the Gateway Parkway Extension.
Yes, sir. So this extension will continue Gateway Parkway from Effingham Parkway to Hodgsville Road. And we did request this from Hussey, Gaye and Bell because they've done the original design for Gateway Parkway. Again, that breakdown is in your staff report. Um, due to there being some, there, it's unclear officially when construction will happen and in what phases. So the, um, construction administration fees will be brought back to you for approval, uh, but staff recommends alternative one.
And the, the connection with, um, Bro, the IGA to be reimbursed, cause this is gonna be reimbursed to us, right?
Correct, and so that, that agreement has to be, uh, has to be worked out. Um, and so, um, we have to, um, come up with a, uh, basically an agreement that as development progresses, we get reimbursed. Um, uh, and so, but.
There's no question we'll get reimbursed, it's just how we're gonna get reimbursed.
That's correct.
Allen wins.
Okay, Allen wins. Just wanna make sure that was covered before we approve. Design deal.
Understood.
Alright, any other question, question in session?
Just a little concerned. Were you okay to go ahead with this without agreement from them, or?
Well, it's, um, we can, we can try and negotiate an agreement first, um, uh, if you, if you want. I just, um, that I figured would.
We kinda made it a priority to get this design, cause we wanna be able to build it.
Yeah.
So we're gonna build this first regardless of what is developed along the way, or is that?
No, we, um, we're gonna design regardless. Um, uh, prior to construction beginning, we'll have a, we'll have, uh, an agreement in place, uh, for reimbursement.
Just didn't want them coming out, well, we'll do our own design type thing and we've paid 300 grand for a design. We don't think that's an issue.
No, I mean, it, I mean, obviously there's, um, I mean, they, eh, they're gonna wanna, they're gonna want, want to build the road eventually. Sometimes we're just trying to get it done quicker.
Right.
Because it benefits the residents more than the industrial park.
Totally understand that. That's good. Uh, make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Floyd to approve alternative one, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no, it passes unanimously. Item number 11, consideration to approve a cooperative service agreement between Effingham County and the US Department of Agriculture.
Yes, sir. So this has, uh, been requested by the Parks and Landscaping Department. They are having issues with beavers at, uh, some of the county property. Um, so this agreement, they'll come in and, um, help take care of them. Staff recommends alternative one.
Have a motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloche, second by Mr. Kiefer to approve alternative one, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no, it passes unanimously. Item number 12, consideration to approve a change order number four for DPR architecture for contract 20 dash 006 for AE Services.
Yes, sir. So this is for additional civil and surveying services, um, at the Marlow Station. Um, staff recommends alternative one.
Any discussion or motion for alternative one?
Yeah, I told too, um, Tim, county manager, about this. I saw where the, uh, the price had went up a good bit, but he explained that we actually added work, I guess, to the scope. And we're getting, what, about two extra buildings designed, so that, that was the reason for that.
That's right. They, so they're essentially replicating, uh, we had original contract for two buildings, um, or three buildings, or I think four, actually, now that I think about it. Uh, and then we're replicating really two of the buildings that they've already designed. So it made more sense for us to do a change order than a new contract. Um, because when we build these firehouses, uh, you know, they're the, they're an identical design a lot of times. So, uh, the, um, South Effingham is essentially identical to both Guyton and Effingham. Uh, and then, um, Marlow is going to be similar, except a little bit larger. It'll have an additional bay, uh, and some bedrooms. Uh, but the design will be similar, so we, we, it would save a little money. We had the, essentially the old rates. Um, so we changed order of the contract versus, um, doing a new, new one, so.
I don't have any other, uh, comments. If nobody else does, I'll make a motion to approve alternative one.
Motion, Mr. Deloche, second by Mr. Burdette for alternative one, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no, it passes unanimously. Item number 13, consideration to approve a quote from Toast for new terminal at the concession stands at Clarence Morgan Complex.
Yes, sir. So this was a request from Jeffrey Lonan, um, director for recreation. Uh, and this was to add a second card terminal at the CEM concession stand due to the increase in usage. Um, the fees will follow the, the other ones. There is the one-time startup which is listed on the staff report. Staff recommends alternative one.
Common sense, nobody uses cash anymore.
Exactly.
What do we?
And I missed an entire reading last night standing in the line.
Yeah, those lines get long, yeah. What do we have to do to get that at, um, Sand Hill?
Um, I think what we'll probably end up doing is just, uh, we're, we're gonna end up more, ordering more of these things. So, um, the issue with Sand Hill is internet connectivity. Um, and so if we, IT is working on that, um, and once we get, uh, one, uh, once we get fiber out there, um, we should be able to put one at the concession stand out there.
Yeah, cause that'd really help me out, keep me out of trouble with my five-year-old, cause I just don't carry a lot of cash and we're out at Sand Hill a good bit and she's not happy with that.
I mean, it costs us, it costs us like a $195 initial fee then $35 a month or something?
It was $35 a month. I think it was, unless I have a typo, was it 900 startup for the machine and everything?
900 startup? To me, do we need to be approving these individually as a commissioner, or we just need to approve for the staff to provide sufficient?
The, the issue is a contract. Um, and so, um, you know, I, I can approve a, a purchase. A startup is the, um, the issue is we have an existing contract.
Gotcha.
Uh, and that you all have to approve contracts.
Keep coming back to us every time you wanna do one.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, do you have a motion for alternative one?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Deloche, second by Mr. Floyd for alternative one, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no, it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 14, consideration to approve the engineering evaluation and feasibility study for the Effingham County Waste Water Treatment Plant.
Yes, sir. Um, if, when y'all pass the wastewater treat, I'm sorry, the water and sewer master plan, um, one of the, uh, potential, uh, future projects, uh, that it recommending was exploring the feasibility uh, of a northern intake, um, and, uh, our county's own, uh, water treatment facility. Um, uh, there are multiple benefits on this, but, um, there is obviously, uh, considerable cost, uh, associated, uh, if we pursue it. Uh, and so the best course of action was to actually have an engineer come out and do, perform a feasibility study, uh, where they will explore, basically explore all angles of this thing and then make a recommendation to the board.
Very good, and I think they got one.
Staff is, uh, recommending alternative one.
Yep, and I've worked with the representatives tonight. Jim, you wanna say anything real quick, or? You don't need to, if you want to, you can. This is Jim Vaughn.
Great opportunity. What we tried to do was minimize, minimize your, I'm Jim Vaughn with GMC, um, on, go up down the coast here. And we just wanted to minimize the investment, um, on the, uh, initial phase of it in order to, you know, get to a go-no-go. And that's why we proposed a ph- a phase one study. So we are looking forward to the opportunity.
Sounds good. Thank you, Jim. Any questions, discussion, or motion for alternative one?
Make a motion we approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Floyd, second by Mr. Deloche for alternative one, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no, it passes unanimously. Item number 15, consideration to approve the first reading to amend Part 1 Related Laws, Article 2 Board of Commissioners of Effingham County Code of Ordinances.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and board members. This is basically a housekeeping issue. Um, based on legislation that was passed back in 2012. Um, our ordinance, our local ordinance did not get changed to coincide with that law. So this is really just a cleanup measure. Staff recommends approval. Um, our ordinance, our local ordinance did not get changed to coincide with that law. So this is really just a cleanup measure. Staff recommends approval.
Okay. Any questions, discussion, or motion for alternative one?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Delo, second by Mr. Burdette for alternative one. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Hearing no, no's it passes unanimously. I have number sixteen, consideration to approve and publish a new job description for the child in need of services. That's the CHINS program.
Good evening, Sarah Mouseoff, Director of Human Resources and Risk Management. So tonight, um, I come before you with the request uh, to approve and publish a new job description and job title for a CHINS Administrative Assistant. So, um, as all of you are aware, this is kind of new to the county. We started with the CHINS Coordinator. I don't even think she's been a full year yet, but, um, her caseload is incredible right now. So about two weeks ago, Dr. Yancy Ford was presenting to leadership Effingham and mentioned that they do twenty-five daily referrals. And right now they're only giving her about ten because, you know, she has so much case right load right now. Um, so her day is spent going from every school in the county, basically. Um, she's in court sometimes, and then she has to do home visits. So obviously, a lot of those are in the afternoon, evening hours because she has to meet with them once they get out of high school. She has to meet with them when the parents are off work, come up with a game plan, you know, because we're trying to keep them from getting further trouble. And, and to stay out of the system, so to say. Um, so right now she is spending a lot of time, you know, logging miles, driving around. Um, she's doing work at night, in the evenings, on the weekends. Um, so she's asked us, me and County Manager Tim, if, you know, she could get some help. And so we were thinking if she had an administrative assistant, you know, somebody that could keep a home base at the court, at the judicial complex. And that way she can do her rounds and rotations and see the actual people. And then this person is kind of keeping up with the data entry and keeping all the cases on file.
Children who go into, uh, the Child in Need of Services, the CHINS program, are these voluntary? And instead of going through the juvenile court system, they can choose this option? Is that how it is?
I believe some of them can, yes.
Yeah, so some of them they can. And so what it becomes, since this is a voluntary program, um, you know, it's, it's a way of avoiding that process. And think of it more of, uh, um, uh, like an accountability court for children.
Yeah. It's intervention, intervention before you have a record.
Yes.
That's right.
Yeah. I think it's a great program. I, I think, I know they've been asking for the CHINS Coordinator. Now they probably do need assistance and this can only help our juvenile system, I'm sure.
And, and we keep hearing it. I'm sure you guys hear it from all the electeds, the courts, they're so busy and the caseloads just keep increasing.
You don't want kids, kids to get treated like everybody else that just needs a little extra help.
Yeah.
Is there a motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr., uh, Burdette, second by Mr. Delo for alternative one. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Hearing no, no's it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Reports from Commissioners and Administrative Staff. We'll start with Administrative Staff. Tim, you got anything?
Yeah, I'll just say, um, uh, we're continuing to do the, um, uh, the town halls. Uh, next up, uh, is District Three, um, and, uh, and then, um, and then, uh, District Five, and they're working on a District Four date. Um, when, when is the District Three?
Uh, April twenty-third.
Uh, April twenty-third at South Effingham, I'm, I'm sorry, at, uh, Effingham High School. Uh, and so, uh, if there's any content that you want to, uh, brought up to any of these, by all means, uh, just let us know.
Okay.
But the feedback we're getting is actually pretty good.
Anything else? My clerk?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, a couple of things. Um, tomorrow, you all have been registered for the State of the County Luncheon, which will be held at the Ebenezer Retreat.
That is when?
I'm sorry?
For tomorrow?
That's tomorrow. Yes, sir. Next week?
The front building or the back building?
I'm not sure which. I didn't get that information.
The back is the Mildred Kessler building.
I would think it would be that one, but I'm not, I'm not sure. I can find out and shoot you an email.
Okay.
ACCG next week. We got materials in from ACCG yesterday on Friday, so we will incorporate that along with your other travel details. Classes are on Friday, Friday.
Thursday and Saturday. Let's see, classes?
Hold on. Let's confirm. Because they changed it up this year.
Yeah, there was a small class late afternoon on Friday, I think. I'm not sure, but I thought the classes were Thursday and Saturday. Could be wrong.
You are correct. Yes.
When will we have materials and all that good, the goodies?
Well, um, Tashina has submitted your travel documentation to, um, I expect it will probably be Monday, maybe Friday afternoon, just depending on when the check gets cut.
Right.
Just mainly want to see what?
When is she?
You know, I'm trying to max it out.
I understand. Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. That's all I have.
We'll go around the horn and see if there's anything from, uh,
Well, this is kind of a joint thing with me and Roger. The trailer that burnt down, it is over there at Roodland Road. We have discussed trying to find a way to, to clean that up.
And we are in the process of it, which is why it was, um, which is why it's been torn down. Um, and Steve can give you an update on it.
Yes. Um, so it is being torn down. We haven't been in contact with the property owner. And it's, it's a, it's a speedier process than we anticipated. Um, so maybe by the end of the month.
So who's tearing it down?
Um.
You had a contract for somebody to demo.
Because I've seen some people take down some, it looks like they're just rummaging through everything is what.
Um, yeah, I think that somebody was given a, a free-for-all pass for a while before the rest of it was being done. Yes.
That's what it was like. So it is in action.
It is, it is, is active, yes.
Any, any kind of deadlines or anything? Because don't we have to give them a deadline? They don't meet the deadline, then we take action?
Well, we, we finally had a one-on-one with the property owner. And so that was, um, a pretty effective conversation. We did not invoke the nuisance ordinance yet. But we did let them know that it, it does exist and that we were more than willing to use it. And I think that's what motivated them.
Oh, so they're doing it on their own?
Yep.
It doesn't look like they're doing anything but
Right.
Getting the valuables off of it and leaving it, is what it appears to be.
Well, we'll see. I'm opt, I'm very optimistic.
Pulled in every time.
I know, I know.
Hey, what's happening with it?
And CODA's, CODA's got a record of it. It's in Open Gov and, and those kinds.
And it is, there's a safety issue there.
Yes. Yeah. And I don't think that's the only one in the county we've run across either.
Yeah, it's, yeah, okay.
That's all I got.
All right, I got a few things. Um, I will not be, um, I had planned on being at the State of the County Luncheon tomorrow, but I've got a funeral to be at, um, at lunch, lunchtime tomorrow, so I will not be able to attend. Um, Tim, has Roberts Engineering, have they made any comments on Grayson Road over in the Guyton area? I've been down it a handful of times. I know they had to cut a couple of spots out.
That's right. And so the reason they had them cut the couple of places out is because they were not, during inspections, they were not satisfied, uh, with the, uh, how the base was absorbing the, the asphalt. And so they made them cut it out and, and, uh, and reestablish the base and, and put the, uh, new asphalt on top. But they've also, there were cer- certain spots that, um, had a little bit of a, um, not quite a washboard, but, you know, had, had a little bit of a hump that they've, um, there were about three spots they had them grind down. Um, and so I think we're towards the end of it.
The latest complaints I was getting was people were feeling those humps and saying it wasn't a smooth, uh, resurfaced road.
I know in three spots they've had them, um, they have, they've, they've had them address it, so.
Okay. Um, well, thank you. And the other thing is, I know I've mentioned this to you before, but just something that's, uh, is pretty much, it's, it's important to District One, Three and Four, not that, um, it's not important to District Two and Five. But I know, I think, uh, Public Works is, is asking for a specific cutting machine, which, um, I'm just weird. I ride around and when I see limbs getting close to the road, it bothers me and it drives my wife crazy. And, um, but that's one thing we are behind in, I know, in these three districts. It, and, and it's been, we've got older equipment. We've done what we could. Last year we did purchase a new, um, tractor with a Boomax arm on it, and that was, that was great. I mean, that, that helped. But, um, just between those three districts alone, we could run two of those things every day.
Well, I, I don't even think you'd have to. These things operate so quickly, um, compared to what we've traditionally been using was a Boomax. Um, which only lasts so long before you have to sharpen the blade. So this new, it's very difficult to describe, you know, I, you know, we may even show you a video during, uh, during the budget capital, but we, we are putting it in there. Yeah.
I started talking to, um, Kristin Ockziger about it because I saw it, because Evans County had one. And going the back way down to my wife's family in Patterson, there's a spot where they always part their equipment. And it was something different. And it looked very efficient. It was, looked a lot better than a Boomax. But just full disclosure, I think the price tag on it's around a hundred ninety thousand. I mean, of course, nothing's cheap these days, but if we buy the right thing, it, it will get used because we, we definitely need it running. Because we are, we are getting behind on some of that work, I've noticed in the county. But anyway, there's my sales pitch and, um, I'm done.
Kind of a follow-up. How about the, uh, grass cutting contract? Has it started yet? I had a constituent.
It's supposed to start next week. I got an update on that earlier.
Good, because I'd, I'd heard the McCall Road, grass was up to your knees. I don't know if that's true or not. I hadn't ridden down it, but.
I've had a couple of complaints as well for D two.
I can, what I can do is, uh, I can, uh, shoot you out a schedule of, uh, of what roads are being done when. I think we've got three, you know, throughout this growing, uh, growing season, we'll have, um, between now and, and the end of the fall, well, there'll be three cuts for, for, for each road.
We've had some warm weather and lots of rain.
Supposed to start next week as well.
That's probably what's making little.
When do they end up, Tim?
What's that?
When do they end up? Around September, October or?
Well, it, that, that's a preference. Um, but, you know, in, in
Growing around that time.
Yeah, in some cases, it's, like, uh, I think it was last year or two years ago, uh, you know, just simply because of the amount of rain where they can't go out there. Um, it ended up pushing into early winter. Um, but, um, um, but they'll, they try to get it done by, um, mid-fall.
They do like four cuttings?
Three.
Three. Might need to look at increasing that.
Schedule. I'd like to see that. I'll answer, answer questions.
All righty.
A couple of things. Um, nothing major. Have you heard anything about the lights at Ebenezer Landing? Maybe getting that light? Operational? Okay. You know, Avacorn Landing.
Oh, Avacorn. I'm sorry, I said Ebenezer.
Yeah, I did. Met Avacorn.
Uh, no, I haven't, but I can, uh, I can, I can have them taken care of it. Yeah.
Yeah. Um, that and, uh, I haven't received anyone's, uh, reports of trucks parking on Old Eagle, but I don't know whether that's been handled. I have not.
Well, let me give you a little bit of an update on that. Um, we are working with, um, code enforcement because the issue is, uh, and, and we try and get out there. We try and get the Sheriff's Office out there to help us because they're there off hours. And so, um, to, um, but they can only get over there, you know, at, at certain times. And so we're working with code enforcement to kind of stagger their schedules with an A schedule and a B schedule, um, so that, um, uh, you know, they can alternate. Uh, where one starts a little later in the day and finishes up later at night, um, later in the eve, or earlier in the evening, early in the evening. And it, uh, it will allow them, most, most of these trucker, trucks are there after five o'clock. And so this was, this will allow us to kind of go out there at seven-thirty or eight o'clock. Um, and, um, and, and talk to, uh, residents who can't talk to code enforcement, um, you know, uh, during working hours. So, um, that's one of the reasons why we're doing that is simply because we know that, uh, a lot of these violations happen after hours.
And they tend to come in waves. Once, once word gets out, they stop doing it for a while.
That's right. And then they start up again.
Yeah. Um, and I guess the, the free waste disposal went good by all accounts that I've heard.
Yeah, I forget what the number was, but it was some ridiculous like, uh, um,
There was a lot of people out there.
Like eighty tons or something. I, I
Yeah, they estimated a hundred tons.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, so it ended up being about a hundred tons, which is a record for us. Uh, and just very, very orderly. So, um, uh, Griffin did a, uh, a good job on coordinating that.
Hopefully that's a lot of tonnage that won't end up on our, our public that I've been on the road.
And we're, we're going to make sure, now that we got him in there, we're going to make sure that, you know, we haven't been doing these as, as often as we should. And so we're going to make sure that we get their multiple ones per year, um, a, a little more often, spring, summer and fall.
Is there another place we can do it in District Two? Since I've got so much density there. I know we're using that spot we used to use, uh, for our lay-down yard for the Parkway.
Yeah, and that's the, and, and part of the, the reason too is that, um, when we did this, I forget it was four years ago, and we didn't man these locations, um, it was a disaster. Uh, and so if we do one in District Two, we, we probably take it away from, uh, it, maybe at another, if we found a location, we'd take it away from, um, maybe Sand Hill. Uh, and then, um,
Maybe rotate it.
Yeah, that's what I mean, rotate it.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Um, uh, you know, for, for different locations, but
We were manned last time we did it, but that was, then the following years when they moved in and occupied that. I think we got a little acre there or something.
Right. Yeah, so they were just basically leaving the, leaving the bins, uh, and then coming to pick them up, but there wasn't anybody there.
Oh, in between.
In between. And that's what the issue was. Um, and so with both of those locations that we did during those hours, um, there was somebody there at all times.
When are, uh, we going to get the spring paving started?
Uh, we had pre-bid meeting today.
It'll be on your next agenda, uh, for awards.
May, June?
Well, we were hoping to get it on, um, the, we had to cancel a meeting. So we're hoping to get it approved on May sixth. So we'll be talking about end of May, early June.
All right. Now just, people's calling saying, are you sure you're going to do this paving? I said it's coming.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Well, I'm okay with a special call meeting if we need to at some point to, yeah, get it going.
Have a quorum.
If it is.
You don't have a quorum. That's a problem.
Got to have that.
Yeah. Um, and if, and Sarah did have an announcement. If, if she can make a quick statement.
Tim jokingly refers to me as the cheerleader, but I just wanted to share in this meeting on a positive note. Some of you guys might remember Ms. Shelby. She's our part-time, um, administrative assistant. So she recently, a few months back, left finance, and now she's in Development Services. And she actually works the front window right down here. Great asset, loves helping the public with, um, Open Gov and everything. And she recently, so this is kind of like a supported employment opportunity that we partner with B and B Care Services right up here in Springfield. And she was just named, um, champion for twenty twenty-four by the Low Country Down Syndrome Foundation. And she's actually receiving her wor- award on Friday, May third. So today they came and they videoed her doing her work and got to interview her direct boss, you know, Steve Kandler from Development Services. So just really excited for her, great recognition, and, um, what a great opportunity to spotlight what we're doing here at the county. So just wanted to share that with you guys. If you're interested in attending, let me know. And, um, hopefully maybe we could get some tickets and have a nice little cheer squad. Um, I believe it's going to be at the Weston, so in Savannah. Yep, yeah. Okay, I will. Yes, sir. Thank you. All right. Appreciate it.
So what Tashina just gave you, the, um, pink highlights are the classes that you're taking on those days.
Very good. Thank you, Tashina. All right, is there anything else? Do you have a need for executive session tonight? No need for executive session, uh, consideration for approving the April fourth, two thousand twenty-four executive session minutes? Do you have those? We're waiting on her to pass that out. I know we have several of our candidates that are running for office. I don't know if you want to just, and it won't be at the mic, but if you want to stand up so everybody can know who you are and what you're running for, might at least get some eyeballs on some people who are running.
I can't stand under the mic there. Damon Ron, Commission Chairman.
Alex Long, Commission Chairman.
Alfred Bryant, uh, County Commissioner, District One.
James Ray, City District Four, City, uh, Commissioner.
Caroline Steele, District Four.
Scott Barnwell, District Four.
Okay, welcome. Good to have you at the meeting tonight. Do you, do you have the, uh, approve it at the next meeting? All right, we'll, we'll approve those at the next meeting. So we have no other businesses. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Delo, second by Mr. Kiefer to adjourn this meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Hearing no, no's we're adjourned.
You made it.